Meeting will come to order. Welcome to our meeting here on Streamline. I hope that all of you are satisfied to get us all. Look at us, please. Uh, we will have a roll call that says that we are all present except Mr. Knacksek. He's on webinar and he is with us. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Report on actions from closed session. Personnel matters. Appointment of an elementary vice principal Christina Halsey. Mr. Neely motioned, Ms. McFarland second, that the board approve the appointment of Christina Hazely as elementary vice principal location to be announced effectively date uh by a vote of seven zero. Appointment of Jeff Pappas, elementary vice principal. Ms. McFarland motioned, Mr. Porter second, that we approve the appointment of Jeff Pappas as an elementary vice principal location to be announced by a vote of seven zero. Appointment of ice elementary vice principal Joseph Ward. Mr. Mr. Porter motioned, Ms. McFarland second, that the board approve the appointment of Joseph Ward as an elementary vice principal location to be announced by a vote of seven zero. Appointment of a high school assistant principal. Mr. Freitas motioned, Mr. Neely second, and the board approved the appointment of Jose Gutierrez as a high school assistant principal location to be announced by a vote of seven zero. That concludes all the actions on closed session. We will have now the superintendent's report. Dr. Washer?
Thank you, Mr. Nava, members of the board. I just want to extend our sincere condolences to the family of Robert Seeler as we have lost a dear staff member. Um, Robert was in our MNO department, recently served as supervisor of MNO. Uh, before that, he was a custodian, been with the district over 20 years. Um, Robert was had a kind heart, a kind soul, and he was a model employee, had a work ethic that we could all be inspired by and can be an example for all of us. Whenever he was asked how things were going and what um status was in MNO, his attitude was always, we're gonna get the job done no matter what. Um, just a all around wonderful person and excellent employee. Um, so I wanna recognize him and extend our condolences to his family and also the maintenance and operations department staff um who are going through grieving as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Washer. Any other comments?
No, Mr. President.
All right, comments from the public. A 20-minute time period has been set aside for the public to address the board and items not listed on the agenda. Each public speaker shall limit his or her comments to these three minutes, but is welcome to distribute any material to the board or and/or staff due to the restrictions imposed by the California Brown Act regarding discussion topics that are not on the agenda. Board members may not engage in dialogue about the issue. Uh, how many speakers do we have?
Right now, we have six, President Nava.
Six, okay. Three minutes, let's put on the first speaker, please.
Okay, Maria Smith.
Maria Smith, you're on, Maria.
Um. Go ahead, Maria.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, can you hear me now? Yes, okay. Good evening, Dr. Washer and board members. My name is Maria Smith. I have taught at John Muir for the last four years and before that I taught in the Bay Area for 17 years. I have listened to these board meetings for the last several weeks and have watched as teachers from all three levels gave presentations outlining what they did during distance learning for the final quarter of the 2019-2020 school year. I listened to the praises and thanks from the board. Comments like, wow, that's amazing. How engaging. And you really went above and beyond for your students. Last week, I watched a first grade team present lesson plans for the first quarter of distance learning in the 2020-2021 school year, which by the way took them over 600 hours to create and again heard nothing but accolades from the board members. All of this praise and appreciation is nice, but tarnished by the fact that we worked the entire 2019-2020 school year without a contract. Ninety percent of the voting LEA members said no to tentative agreement recently offered by the district, which I hope sends you a message. We are tired of being disrespected, unappreciated, and taken advantage of. To hear that the district was given COLA that it put it into the general fund instead of being passed on to the teachers is unacceptable. The governor's budget released yesterday puts the district in much better financial light than previously thought. You need to resolve our 2019-2020 contract and do the right thing. Give us the COLA that was meant for teachers, not for the district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Maria, who do we have next?
Maria?
We have Mary Ella Randell.
Mary Ellen?
Mary Ella Randell.
Ella, Mary Ella, you're on.
Mary Ella? Yes, sorry, I just got unmuted. Dr. Washer, thank you. Um, Dr. Washer, President Nava and members of the board. Mr. McGregor made some great points at last week's board meeting about all of the things teachers will have to teach students after being out of the classroom for so long. This includes things like hand washing, social distancing, and mask safety, et cetera. The vast majority of this will fall on teachers. It will be a lot of work in addition to possibly doing a hybrid teaching plan. This will take cooperation from all parties and investment from parents, teachers, administration, and staff. There will also be a considerable need for counselors and RSP teachers that can support our students after their learning loss. We need the district to bargain in good faith so these changes in working conditions can be agreed upon by all parties. Teachers are also aware that this learning loss has negatively affected our underprivileged students at a higher rate than other students. In addition, we can see from the data that disadvantaged communities and people of color have higher rates of coronavirus and death from the virus. What safety precautions are being considered to address this inequity of our most at-risk students and families? Lodi Unified will be asking a lot of its teachers in the coming years. It's time to treat us fairly and respect that 90% of LEA members voted no on the TA. You need to work with us so that Lodi Unified can move forward and come up with plans that value safety and education. Last week, Jose Maciel also described how successful teachers have been with distance learning during summer school. I'd also like to echo how much work it takes to prepare distance learning plans. We heard last week that the team of first grade teachers logged over 600 hours and that is just a start to the work that it would take to run distance learning for an entire school year. We cannot be short-sighted in our planning of reopening schools. It worries me that we may go into a new school year with many new challenges without having a settled contract for our previous school year. There are so many unknowns and I think everybody involved would feel better if we can all come together and compromise. Schools need to be safe for students, teachers, and staff. Everybody has people they care about and if only some people are following guidelines, there's no way for everybody to stay safe. Teachers want our students to be successful, but that cannot be, that cannot happen if we are fearful of contracting the virus or bringing it home to our families because the safety expectations are not enforced. If we do move forward with a hybrid option, we need to make purposeful changes to what students do at school so that on days they're at home, they are more successful. If teachers are more purposeful with limited in-person time, then the activities can, um, sorry, then the activities completed at home can be more successful. Lodi Unified needs to move forward making purposeful changes to the way we educate students to reflect student and staff safety and educational success for all. Thank you for your time and consideration tonight.
Thank you, Maria. Next?
Next, we have Kimberly Freiberg.
Kimberly, you're on.
Thank you. Good evening, President Nava, members of the board and Superintendent Washer. The almost 1,500 teachers switched on a dime to make distance learning happen for our students in Lodi. But we can't get a contract negotiated within the school year. The teachers should be enjoying our summer break, but I know that I can't because we don't have a contract for the school year that I've already worked. The tentative agreement was voted down by 90% of teachers. That should speak to you when 1,200 members of 1,500 voted. I don't know of any other profession that continues to work while they don't have a contract in place. I find myself struggling to think about the next school year feeling like last year isn't completed because I didn't have a contract. We flipped education around in a week or two and we can't get a contract agreement in months. This is a waste of time, energy, and money. You can continue to show the people of Lodi that your teachers don't matter when you hold their COLA as part of your healthy 17% reserves. As mentioned from a social media video from this evening where board members mentioned the minimum is 3%. You need teachers to teach in whatever model we go with, but you don't show the teachers the respect we deserve. I'd like to remind you, I'm a teacher, not a babysitter. If you'd like to pay me per child per hour, we can talk. I've seen a parent email where a board member replied, we will probably return to full classroom with easily applied modifications. I hope the board remembers that we need to negotiate a change in working conditions and gives us the time to apply these modifications during our return to the classroom, not our summer break. I want to return to a safe classroom and school environment. Please come to the table and bargain in good faith. Let's work together and not against each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Next?
Mary Valerica Hood.
Mary?
Good evening, uh, President Nava, Dr. Wash and members of the board, can you hear me? Okay, great. Uh, much has transpired in the two weeks since I last spoke. I appreciate knowing the safety of staff and students is important as hand washing stations and assorted PPEs have been procured. Thank you. And the COVID 19 numbers are skyrocketing. When I spoke on June 2nd, there were 982 confirmed cases in San Joaquin County. Today, there are 2,560 positive cases and 91 hospitalizations. Confirmed cases have nearly tripled in two weeks. Lodi Memorial has one-fourth of all of the COVID patients in San Joaquin County. People will claim that this is due to more testing being done, however, hospitalizations being up scientifically has nothing to do with the amount of testing done. Lodi and San Joaquin County are now COVID hotspots. As any mathematician can tell, the curve is certainly not flattening. Quite the contrary, the curve is continuing upward. And some people claimed early, the hot weather will take care of the virus. The data disproved that claim. As I reflect on these statistics, I wonder what will that mean for those of us who will become essential workers in August? We know that repeated exposure is a prominent method of spreading an infection. Students and staff members may be asymptomatic. What is the data for prolonged exposure for those who are asymptomatic? I happened to run errands um today in Lodi and two people stated, oh, this is just a flu. One stating in a disgusted manner, are we gonna have to mask up every time there's a flu? And the other stating she had received a flu shot, so she didn't have to worry. As I reflect on these comments and so many similar ones made in ignorance by others, I am saddened. How have those of us in education failed the teaching of science? Science isn't political, science is, well, it's science. Everything around us is based on science, sun, cars, earth, desk, chalk, trains, et cetera. We explore through science. We make a hypothesis and then prove or disprove it. It is not stagnant, science is fluid. COVID-19 is a novel coronavirus, novel meaning new. It behaves differently than other coronaviruses and we need to respect that. I appreciate Dr. Washer's reopening of schools plan as being fluid, depending on science, and that that decisions to proceed need to be based on fact. I think all of you know that teachers want to get back to the classroom. We miss our students, we know parents want children back to school. We know those connections just can't be reached the same way via Zooming or Google Chatting. However, I urge you to proceed with caution. Unless things dramatically change for the better, please start at level one or possibly level two with teachers possibly looping with their students. We have worked hard to make distance learning work. And as any video game enthusiast knows, you can always level up, but you never want to level down. I have one final thing, I support the other teachers who have talked. Times are trying and difficult. Teachers in our district have proved we are here for the children. There is nothing more we can prove to you that how much we care. Prove to us that you care for us too. Thank you.
Mary, next?
Next, we have Debbie Clemmons.
Debbie, you're on.
Hi, my name is Debbie Clemmons. I am a teacher at Lodi High School. I've been teaching for over 30 years. I teach biology primarily and I have a couple of topics that I wanted to discuss. The first is AP students. I'm wondering if the district has thought about the possibility that AP students may select distance learning? If AP teachers are in class for a full return or a hybrid, will uh, who will be able to teach those students, I'm sorry? Um, AP teachers need special training. We don't have enough to cover AP students if they're teaching in class and then we have some also selecting distance learning. So those teachers needing that special training, how will we have enough teachers to cover those AP students that are on distance learning? My second topic is about social distancing in a science classroom. Uh, many of us who teach in a science classroom have students sitting at tables of two or four. Um, in my classroom, I have students sitting at tables of four and some of those students sit as close as 18 inches from one another. Uh, I'm concerned that if we go back full-time, that those students can't be social distanced. And it seems to me that the best way to remedy that would be to have half the number of students that we normally have in class with one sitting at each end of the desk. Uh, I think that's an important consideration that the district should um take under advisement before they make any kind of a decision for next year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you, Debbie. Next?
Next, we have Lana Gentry.
Lana?
Hi there, good evening, Dr. Washer, Mr. Nava and the school board. These are extraordinary times and if more people wish to speak at the school board meetings, they should not be cut off, as happened at the last one. If public comment goes over 20 minutes, then we need you to listen. Since only Mr. Porter has responded to our emails, we need to speak publicly in hopes that everyone will hear us. We are parents, employees, and constituents who will be voting in November. I am very concerned about seeing a plan on the agenda to return to school five days a week with all students on campus. This is dangerous. San Joaquin County has just been put on state watch due to the increase of cases, as previous speakers have said. Lodi Memorial is sending patients to Damarin because they have so many staff and doctors, people working at the hospital that have tested positive. And the governor has made masks mandatory. It's pretty simple, medical experts have recommended three things, washing your hands, wearing face masks, social distancing by six feet. So first, I'm washing hands. We need additional hand washing stations for every school in the district. For example, Bear Creek only has three restrooms for 2,300 students. Often, only one restroom is open and the restrooms do not have warm water. All staff restrooms do not have warm water. High school classrooms do not have sinks, water, and soap. So I asked, have sand time, have hand sanitizers been installed in every classroom yet? They have been already installed in Galt classrooms. The second one is face masks. Masks need to be required and cannot be optional to protect everyone on campus. How are we going to handle students without masks? Has the district purchased extra masks? I need to be protected for my health and I am responsible for taking care of my mother. We are both in a high-risk group. Thirdly, social distancing. High school teachers are thrilled if they do not have more than 35 students in a classroom. It is impossible to spread out 35 desks. If we only have half of the students on campus and in class, that would still be 17 students in my classroom. No room configuration would allow six feet between 17 students. I could probably do about three. Finally, I saw a doctor today who said not to be concerned if the six-week follow-up appointment did not happen. He was anticipating that we might have to close down again due to COVID. I asked what he thought about schools reopening and he said that it shouldn't happen. He was absolutely not because the COVID cases now, it is higher than when we closed down everything. He said that he wouldn't send his own kid to school if schools were doing 100% everybody on campus and in school. He also said sadly, it will probably take a few kids dying before people will realize how serious it is.
Three minutes?
Yes. Oh, one minute? I implore you to make decisions based on health and not public pressure. I'm scared for myself, my children, students, and coworkers. Does LUSD need to have a few students or employees die before we plan for the reality that school will look different this year? I would also like to mention that when we um are watching these school board meetings, we can see you and it would be really nice if you weren't on your phones. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Lana. Anybody, any more other comments?
We have no further comments.
No further comments. That concludes our comment set session. Uh, we have comments from board members. We'll start out with Mr. Neely.
Thank you, Mr. Nava. Couple of things, first of all is uh I want to acknowledge the number of emails uh that we've gotten. Uh, I've received more emails on the subject of reopening, more than I have on any other subject or all of the subjects put together. So uh, it would be helpful, I know we're gonna continue to get them, if you could put your requests a little more concise toward the top because there's so many, I'm telling you, it's unbelievable uh that we can get the opinion out of there and know what we need to to get your opinion. All right. The second thing is I wish that we had this kind of support also when we're talking about um budgeting from the uh from the state. We're 41st in the state in per student budgeting. And I've been working on that, I've been talking about it for years now, working with CSBA on it. If we could get this kind of support from everybody to go to the state, we might actually be able to make something happen. Someone has people just to consider that because we are 41st in the nation in per student funding and we could do a lot more if we had more money. Thanks, Mr. Nava, that's all I have on this one.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Neely. Mr. Weber?
Uh, Mr. Porter? Thank you, Mr. Nava. I I have a couple of thoughts. Uh, first of all, with the opening of schools, uh doing all my research, I've um you know, it's a struggle, it's just so much going on, the county numbers are rising. Uh, it looks like the EU is going to maybe close off Americans traveling to Europe, uh which is unbelievable, unprecedented. And I was stuck with this quote. It said, it always seems impossible until it's done. That comes from Nelson Mandela. And it's very important at this this time in our generation that we have to deal with these issues. I read an article from the New York Times where they had polled 500 epidemiologists and about 320 responded. And over 70% of the epidemiologists said that they would send their kids back to school at the end of fall or at the beginning of fall. But they had a caveat in the article, it said it depends. It depends, of course, on the family's health risk. It depends upon their work demands. And it depends upon how the children are doing academically, socially, and emotionally in their lives. To them, school is so important for both their careers and for their children's development that they're willing to risk that they would not for something so valuable. These are epidemiologists and they go across the spectrum in some of their comments. One epidemiologist from Harvard said, children would be the largest vector, but without coordinated national policies, we need to open up. Another said the virus infrequently infects children and children are less likely to pass it to others. It just shows you the wide range of what's going on with this new and strange virus that we have going on. And finally, I I think when we start looking at the possibility of reopening, of course, we need VRA, a virtual remote academy. We need to include our AP classes in that. We also need to look at a course class size for science. You can't run labs when you have 32 students, it just doesn't work. Also, when and if we go back to reopening, we should probably stagger the reopening in a sense that we bring the students in by alpha and show them the new ways of doing things in terms of hygiene, how they ride it, or excuse me, how they get on and get off a bus, what they're gonna do for lunch, how they interact with their teachers and so forth. And last but not least, we need to make sure that we have an alcohol-based disinfectant. Having hot water is not, is gonna be very difficult, but an alcohol-based disinfectant would be the best way to go and a lot of distilleries now are moving towards doing that. So with that in mind, I think we're we're at crossroads. We really have, this board does, a very important, heavy decision to make. We've gathered in a lot of information from the community and from teachers and from administrators. And the number one thing we have to worry about, of course, is the safety of our students, our teachers, and of course, all our other employees. It's a difficult decision. And I know with all of your help from the community and with this board that is really concerned about doing the right thing, we will come to a good conclusion. Thank you very much, Mr. Nava.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Uh, Mr. Knacksek?
Thank you, President Nava. Um, I I want to echo something that Mr. Neely said is uh the number of emails has been absolutely huge. And I have to say, both sides of the the school opening question have been very, very passionate. Um, and I all I can say at this point is I appreciate your passion and I hope that uh you will trust us to make the best decision for students. That's it, Mr. Nava.
Thank you, Mr. Knacksek. Um, Ms. McFarland?
Thank you, President Nava. Um, the the echoing um statement, I guess I hear, is emails. Um, and I'd like to start with, most of the emails or a large portion of the emails have to do with the task force and findings um and the surveys that went out. the task force and findings, um, and the surveys that went out. I'm going to start with task force. Um, while I have been part of them, not at a district level, in a public, um, setting, in a business setting, task force committees, um, think tanks, you can change the, the, the title of them, but they all serve the same purpose, to abstract information from people that know more or different information than the people that need to use it. Um, I want to thank all of our task force and committees within the district. You are a valuable and viable portion of how we make decisions. But I want to be real clear, the task force, um, are, are convened for input and feedback for curriculum and instruction specifically related to, to COVID. Um, in no way was the task force put in place, um, to make, um, to, to design instruction models or operation models. Um, and so I think, um, from a, from a board perspective, I want to apologize. Um, I want, I want it clear when we convene a committee or we put a task force together that you're extremely important and your work is extremely valuable, and I don't ever want a teacher or a member of our, um, education community to feel that you're not valued. Um, and so I apologize to you if you feel that way. Um, I also want you to know that your inform, I want, want you to understand that your information is important to us, but in no way, shape, form can I give you the promise that it will be used in the manner in which you deliver it. So I think we have work to do, and we have more understanding, and we need to be, um, none of that transparent is the word that I would use. I would say we need to have more understanding, um, of about what our, what our common goal is. Um, and if it isn't, isn't construed properly, it's our job to make sure that the people that are convening on these committees and task force have a clearer understanding, and so I, I, I want to make sure that's clear. Um, the other, the other thing I want to talk about is, um, the surveys. Um, I, I find that the information coming from them very valuable. My, my kind of surprise was that the models that were presented were always the way I understood it, is in lieu of, or in, in, as a backup if we couldn't go back to full, full teaching on a classroom, I would, normal teaching, I guess, normal school days. And I, I have never heard a board member say that, um, that they don't want the children in the classroom with the teacher. Um, and, and I thought that was assumed when those surveys went out, that that was always the end goal. But if we can't do that, which of these models is more important? And again, I want to apologize to you, teachers, parents, who took these surveys. Um, if there was, if we did not convey that clear enough, that's on us. And we need to figure out how to convey that better. Um, and, and, and the information is very valuable, valuable to us to make decisions. But again, if we're not conveying what our wants and needs are to you, we need to do a better job. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Ms. Mc, thank you, Ms. McFarlane. Mr. Freitas? Am I muted?
Thank you, Mr. Nava, President Nava. And, uh, I, I would join in the district in expressing our condolences, our thoughts and prayers are with the Seeler family, uh, for the great loss and, uh, the loss to AMNO. Um, it is a very, very tragic loss, and, uh, uh, we, we'd, uh, offer anything that we can to the family and his colleagues and friends through this difficult time. Also, I would join my colleagues in thanking, uh, them for their, uh, great words tonight, and, uh, also, uh, in recognizing the many emails that we have received. Uh, it is great to be working in a district that is so passionate, and, uh, obviously, uh, the emails have been very, very informative. And, uh, I know I have greatly appreciated them, as have my members of the board. Uh, I also like to thank my colleagues, uh, for being here tonight. It's been a long time since we've been in this room together, and, uh, it's good seeing you all. And, uh, I look forward to debating many issues and solving many problems together. Uh, Mr. Porter pointed out two articles that he read in the New York Times. Um, my reading was a little bit closer to home, and two articles really hit home with me in the past week. The first pointing out that, uh, San Joaquin County is of great concern for the state with the COVID outbreak, that our numbers are, are not where they wanted to be, and, uh, are exceptionally disturbing. Uh, the second article, uh, was, uh, one from this weekend, that our local hospital, Lodi Memorial, is being closed to regular patients, and is only accepting COVID patients going forward. Um, boy, that puts it in a perspective, doesn't it? And if you think about our fifteen thousand students that we have in Lodi, if they were to require medical assistance, uh, what that would look like and, and how that would work out. So, um, uh, I'm going to propose, uh, some staggering. I was going to suggest a different strategy for the opening of school, that we use the first two weeks as a orientation-type period, that we have, uh, students come, uh, by class. So say an elementary campus would have, say, all the second graders show up one day. Maybe all the third graders would show up another day. Uh, and through that, we would show them the new norms, the new procedures, the new practices, and we do that in a much smaller way. I, I think, uh, by doing this, we would, uh, allow there to be, uh, additional training to our staff, uh, testing and security. And, uh, by using those two weeks in this, uh, staggered distance-learning-type orientation environment, we'd be a bit ready to go on the seventeenth of August, uh, full-time with a full opening, uh, state and laws allowing. Uh, I will save the rest of my comments for the meeting, but I thank everyone for their comments here tonight. And, uh, I, I look forward to hearing input on these very important issues.
Thank you, Mr. Freitas. Uh, I have very few things to say. The only thing, and it's being redundant, that this is the first experience for actually the whole United States to be in this predicament. We are actually opening new doors into what's going to be happening in the future. I have some ideas, and I will relate those to you when we go into our reports. Thank you very much. Continue on with the, uh, uh, agenda. We start out with reports. I'd like to make a proposal. Disaster with report update and discussion planning for 2020. Here's my proposal for the board and all the fans that are out there, that we have a hundred and ninety-three people's presence, to fully educate our children in Lodi Unified School District. As president of the United, of the United Unified School District, I have a proposal for the board and staff of Lodi Unified School District. And that's reopening of school for 2020, 2021 to be normal. All logistics to start school will be to follow the guidance of the California Department of Public Health, California Department of Education. For those parents who are not, that do not wish to send their children to school, the option is offered distance learning provided by teachers that prefer to participate. If for some reason schools are not asked, are asked, excuse me, to close by the Department of Education, then you continue on with distance learning. The safety of our students, to understand the safety of our students, staff, is of paramount importance. With this proposal, I need to have comments from the board, and it's open to the board. Start out with Mr. Porter?
Um, I, I'd like to pass right now.
Okay.
Mr. Nava.
Bet. Uh, Mr. Knackzak?
You caught me off-guard, I'll pass also.
Uh, Ms. McFarlane?
I guess I can start. Um, I would agree with you, Mr. Nava. I think the, the goal is to open and get back to normal. Unfortunately, we have, um, unique times right now, and so I would also be in favor of, um, opening, starting with a delay start time. I also would not, I would also be behind opening full if, if we, um, demonstrate that we are, uh, ready to follow and have in place protection equipment, and everyone is trained, and the teachers have a chance to acclimate, as do CSEA employees, have a chance to acclimate to the choices. I also would be in favor of this if and when there is a change in status that we move quickly and safely for all employees and students. So you have my endorsement for this plan if we can, um, adhere to all guidelines.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. McFarlane. Mr. Heber, Heberly?
Thank you. Um, I've been in favor of, um, doing a full opening for quite some time with modifications. Modification one is distance learning. Modification two is, of course, safety. Um, the rest of my comments will, uh, I will hold until we're in the report and after the report.
Mr. Neely?
Thank you, Mr. Nava. Um, I guess I'm a little surprised by, by this. I think we were supposed to, we should have gone through the, um, presentation first. Um, we need to get our kids back in school, there's no doubt about that. But there are so many caveats that go with that, and I have so many questions, uh, that I want looked at. And it can't be covered with just a, a, a simple proposal. I, I appreciate, uh, what you're trying to do, but I've got four pages of questions there. I don't know if you want me to go through those now, or if you want me to wait until the presentation.
Wait until the presentation, sir.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Freitas? Okay, the report. Uh, Dr. Washer, you're on to open this.
Thank you, Mr. Nava, members of the board. A couple of comments, uh, before we begin. Uh, just want to, um, reiterate that this has been, um, a process, an evolving process. We've been making changes as the situation has changed, uh, similar to a funnel where the, uh, large part is all the information, all the questions. And as we go through time and as we refine and meet and discuss, um, we go through the funnel to the middle part till we get to the point where we have, um, a revised and solidified plan in place, um, at the end of it. So, um, we are getting close to that point, and, um, hoping that we'll be able to get some direction tonight on how the district wants to operate. Are you able to understand me okay with this mask on? I'm hoping that, okay. Uh, hoping that we get some direction from the board tonight on your preference, um, and if there's any further research or questions that we can do, we want to be sure and, and do that for you. Want to also let you know that, I know there have been lots of questions about the survey, uh, that we will be posting the results of the survey. The reason why it has taken, um, a long time is because we did have an open-ended part of the survey, and there were thousands and thousands of comments. And it took folks a while to get through that, uh, to make sure that we were able to represent those comments and the feelings, um, adequately. So I'm going to ask, uh, Uva to very briefly give you a couple highlights, uh, from the survey, just to get us started, just a very brief couple of highlights, if we could get Uva on. Uva Daman?
Thank you, Dr. Washer, President Nava, members of the board. Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great. So, um, yes, in, in terms of comments, there were about probably six thousand, uh, parents making very, some, just a sentence or two, up to several paragraphs long of comments, about twelve hundred teachers, about six hundred of which, about half made some comments. And really, uh, um, the, the big things that we discovered, um, as we were going through all that was that, um, especially with the cert, for, I'll, I'll read you something here from the certificated, um, certificated summary. Um, certificated staff members spoke mostly about the logistics of the fifty percent hybrid model, and how effectively, how to effectively facilitate instruction to in-person and remote groups, the efficacy of distance learning, how childcare will be dealt with, and how parents will manage when their children are not in school, the logistics, the logistics of starting school and enforcing, uh, social distancing, the support and availability of nurses and properly dealing with students who become sick or test positive for COVID-19, uh, how large group activities, such as testing and other, uh, activities will be managed, how health will be maintained, and then, uh, quite surprisingly, um, the possibility of returning to school full-time. That did come up quite a bit. And, uh, for the, um, parents, uh, they were also, they were mostly concerned about bringing their students back to school full-time, uh, questioning how childcare would be facilitated in a hybrid or full-distance model, given the fact that so many of them work full-time. Concern for the health of their children during the times when they are on school grounds, receiving in-person instruction, concern over the quality and the value of distance learning, and the potential negative consequences of isolation, such as lack of social growth skills, building positive relationships. Um, so those are the big themes that, um, we discovered as we were going through all that qualitative data. Uh, the other thing that, uh, I want to add is that this kind of, the, the comments that we got a lot of, especially from certificated staff with regard to, uh, wanting to go back full-time, um, kind of is echoed in, if we go to the first, I mean, the second slide, go back up. There's a bar graph there, where, there we go, where we asked, um, we asked staff, you know, what are your concerns? You know, you're going to go back, what are, what are you really concerned with, uh, from a health, uh, standpoint? And so these were the questions we, we put, or, you know, are you, um, considered high, you know, do you feel like you're considered hi- high-risk? Um, are there underlying health concerns? Um, are you concerned about, um, you know, uh, you have a care, you're a caregiver for somebody that might be at higher risk? If you take a look there, look at, it's just the, uh, large number of responses, uh, to none of the above. So this kind of, uh, falls in line with a lot of the open-ended comments stating, um, uh, a desire to return to school full-time.
Thank you, Uva. I want you to go on to share that, um, we do have a guidance from San Joaquin County Office of Education, and that came into play on June seventeenth. Up until that point, going back to school full-time was not an option. We are operating under the, uh, parameters that there would need to be, uh, at least social distancing with other safety precautions, um, if we were even allowed to do that. There was questions of even would we be able to come to school at all? So up until June seventeenth, there wasn't the possibility of returning to school full-time. The county guidance does give us, does give you, as the board, the flexibility to make that decision. Um, this, that document and that, uh, guidance was developed in public health, and it gives the board flexibility about decisions. We also shared earlier the different levels, and I won't go through all of that tonight because we have done that. Uh, but we need to look at this as a, as a fluid situation and have plans in place for all of those levels. So we did bring, as you know, very well know, task force groups together to talk about distance learning, because we knew that what we had in place last quarter wasn't going to be sufficient if we continued that. There were too many holes in that, it was good then, but it would not be sufficient moving forward. So we asked them to work on that piece, um, and they did. So that would be for level one for everybody, or as an option for parents as in any of the levels. Uh, level two being the hybrid, three being the in-full, everybody on campus at the same time with some safety measures, and then four, um, pretty much everything is back to normal, there are no restrictions. Uh, so we need to be able to have plans in place for all of those levels. Uh, so we can, um, skip the next slide and go on to, um, what we're sharing with you this evening, our, uh, choices that you have. And of course, you have the choice to have all distance learning, to stay at level one as similar to what was in place at the end of last year, only with an improved model. So you do have that option. You also now have the option of going to level three, which is having regular school schedule with modifications in place. And that would be all students five days a week. So I've listed some. This isn't supposed to be an all-inclusive list. This doesn't mean that we wouldn't consider other things or know that we have to consider other things. But these are some things that have come up from the county public health, from California Public Health, on modifications that would be appropriate, having all students on campus five days a week. And that continues, basically looking at ways to keep children in the same groups, avoid large gatherings, try to stagger things as much as possible to the extent practical, have students spaced out, whether they're standing in line, coming in school, out of school, passing periods, those types of things, having procedures in place. And these are things that each school would need to develop on their own because one size doesn't fit all when you're talking about those procedures. Every campus is different. So the schools would develop procedures and practices to address these issues. Continues on with some more of those items. Again, this is not meant to be all-inclusive. It's meant to give an idea of what the environment would look like if we had all students on campus. We would not have children play on just playground equipment. They wouldn't be sharing equipment, P E equipment, school supplies. The cleaning would have to be something that we take special care in developing clear procedures, the frequent cleaning, high-touch areas, classrooms, disinfecting, making sure that we have products available, making sure that we have personal products available for masks for those students, for the staff at school. Then also social distancing on buses. The county office does provide more flexibility than what we have seen with other guidance documents in that they're looking at social distancing on and off the bus rather than on the bus, but taking precautions when we can by putting siblings together, maybe have assigned seats so students are in the same seat each day, doing daily cleaning of buses. But it does give the board some more flexibility. Lunch service, modifying that so that it's easier in terms of a grab and go, not the buffet-style options that we have, not doing the sharing, putting kids together as much as possible, and even using outdoor spaces as practical. For the elementary also, then, there would be the distance learning component. And this would be for those who choose to not send children to school. You heard last board meeting from teachers who have developed a framework, and I want to emphasize that that could be used as a model. That is not something that was intended to be prescriptive to all teachers. We know that teachers will modify, will enhance, will change based on their own needs and the student needs. But that is something that could be served as a model. We do have teachers who are eager or willing and have agreed to help us over the summer develop that for other grade levels as well. You saw a first grade sample. So that is something that could be in place for all elementary school grades. Also, we do have our independent study program. That's always an option for parents. Depending on the numbers, it could require extra F T E. We would have to look at that to see who signs up for that, to decide, you know, how is that going to pan out in terms of teachers and our current staffing level? So I do want to point out that this could generate the need for additional F T Es in teachers. Moving on to secondary, the model is being designed after summer school. A teacher is developing the courses for distance learning using our same curriculum and offering flexibility at this level. And I think this may address some of the questions that came up earlier, that if students want to take some in-person classes at school, they would have that flexibility to do so. If they wanted to take some distance learning, they certainly could. If they wanted all distance learning, they certainly could. The sites would create their digital sections in their schedule, and students would sign up as they would any other class. Also, an independent our independent study program, like always, is an option. So the secondary program could be very flexible for for students. We know that there will be those who will want to have a full distance learning program. And for older children, that may be more feasible than for younger children because of the childcare issue and not being such an issue with the older children. And some may want to do their own hybrid, depending on their schedule and what classes they want to take. So with elementary, if we're looking at level two, we're looking at a hybrid model with the optional distance learning. So with the hybrid model for elementary, we're looking at half of the about half of the students on campus at one time, as we shared before, every other day or two consecutive days. And this would be that they would get their in-person instruction in class and then do their distance learning when they're not in class. And as you've heard, the the number one issue with this with parents is childcare. Teachers' number one issue is logistics. How does all this work out? Teaching students in person and teaching students online. So the logistics of how this worked, there were a lot of questions and concerns about that and thinking, being concerned that that there would be extra work, double work even to develop this and to implement this if they're doing both in-person and distance learning. With secondary, same type of situation, half of the students in class at one time. They would attend two days a week on alternate days. And on both of these hybrid models, whatever day the students are not on campus would be a day for teacher planning, preparation, making some student contact individually if that's needed, support staff working with individual students. But the one day where there are no students on campus, our staff would be there doing their planning and their preparation. And in any of these, the same safety modifications would be in place, whether you do the come back in full mode or in the in the hybrid model. We do suggest that you consider regardless of how you start, considering delaying the start of year, you know, we put one week, but that certainly is only a suggestion, as Mr. Freitas mentioned, two weeks may be prudent. And this would give staffs time to develop their procedures. They they're just they're coming back almost blind to this, having been gone for so long and not seeing each other and not having these procedures in place when they left. So they would need time to develop the practical logistic end of this, whether the students are there full time or in a hybrid setting. I would suggest that you consider delaying for a short time anyway so that staffs can plan. And the suggestions to bring students back that our board members made in groups to learn the procedures is an excellent suggestion. I think that our staff and parents would appreciate that, having some time to learn about the new new way of school before just jumping into it. This, of course, would depend on if the state gives us the flexibility of ADA versus enrollment. So if we are able to be funded by enrollment and if we have flexibility in our instructional minutes and days, that could be possible. We do have to watch that carefully. We anticipate that that will happen, but we haven't gotten that official word yet, so we need to look at that. There are many unknowns still, as most of you know. State budget maybe is not so much an unknown as it was when this was written, but it still is. We have there's still going to be time before it's signed. So until that is signed, there are still some unknowns. The federal one-time assistance, the funding model, flexibility with days and minutes, availability of disinfectant sprays and products. Mr. Khan and his staff have been diligent in trying to get those secured, and they've done a great job. But the ongoing supply is a concern is an unknown, and it is a concern to be able to secure those. We don't know about all the assessment requirements yet or any changes in health orders. As you know and have seen, this this is changing quickly and can change at any moment. So there may be additional or differences in health orders even before we start school. So we may go down a certain path with a plan in mind and and need to make some modifications before school starts. So what we're hoping for tonight is that you consider the operational models, the different levels, and give us input on what you're thinking in terms of starting the school year, either with an all-distance learning for everybody or that you have a full-time schedule with the option of distance learning or the hybrid model with an option of distance learning. Those are the at the moment, those appear to be the choices that we have at this time. Know that you have lots of questions. We have staff on board ready to answer specific questions as best we can, and we'll take your comments and hope that we'll be able to address those as best we can. We do know that we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow as well.
Thank you, Dr. Washer. We'll give the opportunity for every board member to comment and take as much time as you need to do to put the final cross, Mr. Neely.
Thank you, Mr. Nava. We'll start off with some with a comment about the the survey that was done. Was looking at some of the results, the tentative results on that, and Uva had mentioned it about the large number of teachers who selected none of the above. Actually, that number was 46% that selected none of the above. And this kind of concerns me because that means that we have a lot of people that have some concerns. So my first question is, do we know the number of teachers that will not be able to return to the classroom due to being part of the high-risk group? Okay, and with that, if not, when will we know? And number three, how are we going to define those who are in that high-risk group? Someone answer that for me.
I can answer part, oh, somebody's.
Yeah, that's the first question. I got a lot of questions. That's the first one. How are we going to identify those teachers that can't go back in the classroom? Because that's going to affect the decisions that we make.
Mr. Neely, members of the board, I can answer part of your questions. If you look at the chart here from the survey that Uva Daman has prepared, you can see that the second one, considered high-risk, 244 out of the 1,246 respondents, 244 teachers put themselves in that category. This, of course, is self-reporting, and so it gives us an idea of how many teachers are at high risk and would have health concerns. We would need to get more definitive information. There would need to be verification of that. Need a doctor's note in order to verify that. So that gives us an idea, but it doesn't give us a definitive because we would have to have the verification via a doctor's note to be able to give a definite number. The high risk because of age, you know, 10% of those, 126 out of the 1,246, have said that they are at the age that is considered to be high risk. So you could add those two numbers together, I think, and get an get an idea, not a definite.
Well, that's about 370. So how do we propose to open up classrooms minus 270 teachers?
Well, we would need to make sure that we have verification first of what in any teacher or any staff member, not just teachers, who are saying that they are at risk. We need to have verification from a doctor's note. At that point, we we also will be looking at how many of the parents are choosing the distance learning model. That will add from the survey anyway, we saw that it was about 27%ish around there who initially say that they would prefer an all-distance learning model. We would, of course, need harder numbers than that and have them actually sign up to see how many children that is. That could impact staffing adjustments in terms of the classrooms, not in terms of removing anybody, but in terms of the impact that has at the classroom level, and we could make adjustments there. But to say that we could do without whatever that number is, 300 teachers, I'm not going to say that, yes, we will be able to do without 300 teachers.
Yeah, and I I think this kind of leads to the point that we need to have firm numbers on this. We, you know, our principals probably need to lead the charge on this in finding out what teachers are not going to be able to return to the classroom. And we've said that we can use those teachers to do the distant learning. That's been mentioned before. But if you don't have enough kids to do the distant learning, then I don't know that you're going to have enough teachers to fill our classrooms where we actually need them. So that's going to kind of dictate how our decision goes with this as well. All right, when do you anticipate having this information, Dr. Washer?
Well, if word gives we if word gives us direction to move at least forward with a distance learning program regardless, that would help us in terms of numbers of students. High schools will need to adjust pretty quickly. Their schedules need to know how many kids are going to be choosing digital sections. And that will give us an idea of how many children will then not be in those classes. Same with elementary, if we can get a good number of how a commitment from parents of who how many children and what grade levels will be on distance learning, that will help us be able to tell what our need will be. In terms of teachers, we can start asking any time for teachers to let us know if they are in those if they are officially in those groups.
All right, you you put together the the four levels, and I really think that was a great idea. But wasn't a component of each one of those four levels distant learning?
Yes, the first one was for everybody. After that, it's option.
Right, that's my point. So why aren't we trying to find out how many kids are going to be doing distant learning? You don't need more proof.
We got an initial take is about 27%, but we need to be able to have a more definitive of signups. So we can high schools and elementary schools can start advertising that and getting we can start determining how many children will be participating in distant learning. We can do that as soon as board gives us direction to do so.
Well, it's not an action item tonight, but I would say I will definitely say that we need to find out who's going to be doing distant learning. So I hope my other board members will will back me up on that because I thought that was a done deal since it is part of all the four levels. I'm a little bit disappointed we haven't been moving in that direction.
I agree with you, Mr. Neely. We need to have that information.
We also need to get our principals going to find out what's going to happen with our teachers because these are things that are really needed for us to move forward on it. So and also, if we do distant learning, which we we are going to offer that as an option, how is it going to be done? In other words, is is each school going to have a distant learning component? Or is it going to be centralized? How do you see that happening?
It will be different for elementary and secondary, and I can have Jeff and Scott answer that in more detail. We can start with Jeff. Pomquist?
Hello, President Nava, members of the board, Dr. Washer. Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, la- last week, last week, we had some some folks do a presentation on some options and some ideas that have been kicked around. I'd actually also asked Lori Johnson and Principal Erin Lindsay to be prepared tonight because they have been working. They both both serve on the middle school task force. They've looked at the the same presentation the board got last week on how that might work with each site handling.
Mr. Pomquist, can I interrupt you just a second?
Sure.
I understand. It's my understanding that each high school will have its own distance learning segment, and I understand that because our high schools are big enough and can facilitate that kind of thing. My question is more geared toward our and I think our middle schools can actually do it as well. I think they can have their own. My question is more geared toward our elementary schools, such as, you know, we've got Victor out there. This got, I believe, somewhere around 300 students. I can't quite remember. We got Houston. This got 120. And then we've got some that have 900, close to 100. Somebody check the mics, please. Thank you. All right, so the question is, is how do we do that? Do we have distant learning at each site for elementary? Or do we have a centralized location, or is it a combination of the two? I would like to know that. And I think it'll be Mr. McGregor to have to answer that for me.
Yes, I was going to defer.
Dr. McGregor, are you on?
Yes, I'm on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, President Nava, members of the board, Dr. Washer. For a follow-up on Um, for a follow-up on, um, on the distant learning presentation at the Larson Teachers' Association, assembled a number of teachers, and we're working on that plan as far as the other grade levels, kindergarten, second, third, fourth, fifth. We'll be meeting Thursday and continuing with that plan with input from teachers and coaches to see how we can best meet the needs of all students. And as Dr. Washer mentioned earlier, you know, building upon what Larson has built, um, you know, the teachers are gonna have the freedom to differentiate to meet the needs of their question, their, their students. Mr. Neely, your, your question, I guess, is how do we how do we know, what are the numbers from every school? And I think you kind of spoke to that a little bit earlier. We, we need to get with the principals, we need to identify, you know, with um, the parents extending those surveys to find out exactly who is not going to come back, and I think that drives the direction we, where we're gonna go. Are there specific teachers at each site that can meet the needs of those students that are asking for the distance learning? Or do we need a centralized location? And I think that will evolve when we find out specific numbers. I don't know if, if that answers your question, Mr. Neely, but, um, I think we, we need to get specific with, uh, the numbers so we can, um, appropriately identify and, and meet those needs.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate that, Scott. Uh, but what I'm, uh, what I'm after here is I want the district to direct our principals to have a plan of how they're going to implement, uh, a full day if we do that. All right, and each, each site is different. Uh, Friday morning, I met with, uh, Neil Young out at Woodbridge and, uh, I was joined by Mr. Knackset and Mr. Heverly. And, uh, Neil's been working on this since April. He's been planning out. He walked us around, said, hey, we have all these entry points, everyone's moving in one direction. Uh, he talked to us about meals and how everything is working. We need to have that kind of thing for each site. And the reason that we have to have it from the site and not from the district is because all of our our elementary schools are so different. You know, we've got some of the, uh, well, Woodbridge is, is one place, and we've got Creekside out there, that's the old-style school that's extended out. Then we've got Larson over here that's got a single entry into it, but that's not gonna work real well. We need to do some things there. So we need to look at each one of these, uh, school sites, and the best people to do that is the principal in conjunction with their staff. Uh, so we, we've got a lot of work to do on this, and those two things, we need to find out this as soon as we can, and that is uh, the number of teachers that won't be back in the classroom and the number of students that won't be back in the classroom, uh, and, and take up distant learning. Okay? We need to get there as soon as possible. Uh, the next thing I wanna talk about, um, and, and it's been brought up, we need, we're gonna have to, uh, have more restrooms on many of these sites. And I'm not talking about, we, we may be able to do four ones, and I'm not talking about the little blue things. I'm talking about those trailers that come out that have four restrooms in it, and they have, uh, running water and all that kind of thing. We, we're gonna need those kinds of things in order to, uh, uh, maintain separation. Another question, what's, what's the availability of hand sanitizer? I was a little dismayed when I heard that, uh, at a meeting on Friday, uh, that we didn't have enough. So can someone elaborate on that?
Yes, Mr. Con, are you on?
I am. Thank you, Dr. Washer, uh, President Nava, members of the board, Mr. Neely. Hand sanitizer is tough. Um, we have orders in for thousands and thousands of bottles. We have received, um, hand sanitizer, um, dispensers that we can put in rooms. But we're being told that, uh, uh, the refills to them are very, very difficult. That said, uh, last week, we were able to deliver five-hundred-and-fifty-two bottles. And, um, we're, we're uh, and there's no way we can guarantee that we will have enough hand sanitizer on stock when school starts. But we're hearing at least, um, some green shoots out of the vendors with hand sanitizer. Um, whereas with things like bleach wipes, they're still saying there's no hope, so.
Okay, well, here's one thing I, I wanna make clear is that we will have enough hand sanitizer on hand when school starts. Because if we don't, school won't start. That's my opinion on it. Anyway, you'll have to hopefully I can get through to the people to support me on that. I think I can. All right, uh, let's talk about the PPE that we've got available. Uh, do you have enough to cover our staff? Masks, gloves, all that kind of thing.
We, I, I believe we have enough to cover our staff. We have um, well over a hundred thousand disposable masks. We have four-thousand Plexiglas face shields on order and four-thousand cloth masks on order. Um, I couldn't tell you how many gloves we have, but I can tell you we have enough gloves to support, um, all of our staff.
Okay, uh, what about masks for the children, uh, based on the governor's revised order for masks? How do we see that? Do children need masks?
Well, um, um, I believe, um, by, um, council's reading of the order, yes, they will. Um, I, I, the internal discussion, if the district has to provide daily disposable masks for every twenty-seven-thousand-plus students, there's probably very little hope. Um, that said, I, I mean, you, a simple trip out to, um, a store um, would reveal that, you know, every kid you see in a store now pretty much has their own, um, cloth mask, so I believe some of that, uh, demand will be offset by the families themselves. And then we would backfill, um, um, where students needed.
All right, but what about the requirement, Dr. Washer, uh, from the governor? Do you see that as a requirement that all students wear masks all the time?
We do now. We didn't at first, uh, because there was a footnote in the order that, um, gave flex, or that, um, uh, seemed to appear that schools were exempt. Uh, that footnote, we understand, has been removed uh, and that now it does apply to schools and to children. So at this point, it, it does appear that masks are required. We know that things change quickly, but it does appear at this point that that is the requirement that has come out from the state.
Uh, we've got, uh, many parents who are adamantly opposed to their kids wearing masks at schools.
Yes.
How are you going to address that?
Well, an order is an order. I mean, the board can give us direction, but, um, I would suggest that we follow the state order. There are some exceptions. Um, if children have, um, breathing issues, um, then, of course, there will be some special ed children, um, where masks would not be appropriate. Um, so, um, we would need to make sure that we allow those exceptions and give parents, uh, the procedures to get those exceptions, uh, but our suggestion is that we follow state order.
All right, um, that's gonna be a, a, a big issue and a big point of contention with some parents. I can see parents sending their kids to school without masks and telling them not to wear it. We, we need to be prepared for this. And, um, we, we may need just a little bit more discussion on that, okay?
Absolutely.
All right, let's talk about hotspots for both teachers and students. Where do we stand on that?
Um, excuse me, Mr. Neely. District-wide, we have over three-thousand hotspots and um, after, I think, one and two distributions, we still have plenty left.
Okay, so I we have enough hotspots for teachers that need them, is that correct?
Um, I, I would, I would certainly suggest that we do, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, then we need to get that word out. We need to find out, and I would ask everybody that, uh, if you don't really need one, uh, don't take one because they can become in short supply, and they're also gonna break. We probably need to order some more backups on that. All right, well, one more thing, um, a- a- as everybody's pointed out, this virus changes quickly, dramatically. Uh, things are, uh, not going well here in San Joaquin County. So one of the issues I wanna make sure that we do is that we prepare for distant learning and incorporate it as much as possible into our current curriculum. In other words, the use of Google Classroom, the use of, uh, videos, and things. We need to do what we can so that if we have to shift back to distant learning, we're not caught in quite the same situation that we were when we came back to school in March. So that's gotta be a, a big component of this plan. It's gotta be in, in any plan. Uh, any, any comments on that?
We absolutely agree.
All right, all right, so I'll look forward to seeing that. Um, what's the plan if we have a staff member or a student who tests positive for coronavirus at a school?
Mr. Neely, members of the board, that is something that we will have to work out in more detail, but we would need to make sure that we have communication plan in place, that we have um, procedures to shut down either a classroom and then put them um, all on distance learning or a whole school if that's the case, and the whole school goes on distance learning. Um, so yes, we would need to make sure that we have procedures, and that one would need to be the same for all school sites, that they would follow the same protocol if they have a confirmed case.
Okay, that's the second time I've, I've asked that, that, that question, and that's pretty much what I was told the, the last time as well. And I understand that. You got all kinds of things going on, but I do wanna see that as part of the opening plan.
Yep.
All right, um, have we established what situation might trigger a move to remote learning?
Yes, there are a few things that could trigger, um, going to all-distance learning. That would be that um, there would be an order from the county or the state to do so. Uh, that there would be, um, shutdowns in schools, um, district-wide, um, that would require, uh, many schools to shut down. So it would depend on the status of the pandemic and for ourselves and any orders from outside authoritative agencies.
All right, so let, let's take that on a little bit, and let's talk about testing of our, our, our students and our staff. Do we need to, do we have test kits, uh, that we can test where we think there might be an issue? Or do we just, are we gonna send them to Lodi Memorial, or how are we gonna handle that? Can our nurses administer tests if we have them?
We do not currently have test kits. That has not been something that we have, um, pursued, that we would have in our staffs.
Should we look into that?
We can look into that.
I'm just asking if we should, because, I mean, maybe we have something with, uh, Lodi Memorial or, or somebody that does that for us, or maybe our nurses can do it. I don't know. But we might want to work in.
There are centers that have been set up, um, in different locations for folks to get tested for free.
Okay, all right. All right, that's all the questions I have right now. I'm gonna close with a comment here, though. And that is, if we're gonna need, if we're gonna make this happen, we're gonna need everyone to adopt the attitude that we can do this. It's gonna take the efforts of everyone working together. Working as one team toward the goal of providing the best possible safe and effective education for our students, our staff, our families, and our communities. Because we're gonna have to educate everybody on what we're gonna do here. We don't have time to be engaged in, in, in little arguments about this. Uh, we need to hear, uh, problems, yes, and we need solutions with those problems as all, as well, because, like I said, we've got to work together. Um, we've gotta decide on a plan. I know one that I'm, I'm leaning towards. Um, and whatever plan that we decide on, we've gotta go at it a hundred-and-ten percent. We've gotta get everything we got. Because if we don't, if we don't, we'll fail. And we gotta get this plan in place just as soon as we can because a, a, a good plan that's implemented with vigor is much better than a perfect plan that's implemented too late. I believe it was George Patton that said something similar to that, or his, his was a little more colorful. Um, this is gonna require the cooperation, a real team effort, and remember, this applies to all of us. You can be part of the problem, as my, my colleague, Mr. Heverly, is fond of saying, you can be part of the problem or you can be part of the solution. And I hope that everybody works on this to be part of the solution because I have never seen an issue that has so many people with so many varied opinions on it. But whatever we decide, we gotta come together and we gotta make it work, and we can do that. But it's gonna require everybody working together. Mr. Nava, thank you very much. That's all I've got. Sorry for taking up so much time.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. We need the time to take the dis, uh, you know, all of this stuff there now. Uh, are you, you think? I'm arguing it. Okay, Mr. Heverly.
Thank you, Mr. Nava. Um, several of the points, uh, that I had questions on obviously were, uh, addressed by George, uh, which they're absolutely valid and relevant. Um, one of the things that actually unfortunately has kind of really, um, not very numerous, uh, things that were mentioned was the stay-at-home. That is causing a lot of problems for our students. Um, children, we, we should be worried about their social health, their emotional health. Um, I'm been in contact with people that have been in, uh, mental health services, in medical health services, and they're all saying that, um, one of the things that obviously doesn't come to light very clearly is that th- the suicide rate of our children is increasing terribly. Uh, the anxiety, depression. A lot of these things, um, are affecting our children to great numbers. Um, that being said, there's always, uh, the concern of, of learning. Where are our kids advancing? How are they doing? Um, and everything I hear is that some, a few, are doing okay. Most of them are getting farther and farther and farther behind. That is a real concern because when the kids do come back, then the expectation of, okay, this child is now coming to me as a third grader, they know X, Y, and Z because they've already gone through that in second grade. Well, not necessarily, because not only have they, may have lost it, they may have a whole quarter where they haven't even been presented it. So those are all, um, problems of the stay-at-home order. Um, now, let's say, coming back, whatever that entails. Um, I think as I see it, is that the district's job is to give some basic broad guidelines of here's what we're gonna do, here's, um, the timing in which we're going to do it. But it's going to really, truly take, uh, a, a site-level, um, process for the principals and their staff. And when I say staff, I'm talking about the teachers as well as, let's say, custodial, cafeteria. Um, they're all part of it, is how we're going to move the kids, uh, safely and everybody together enforcing, um, healthy protocols for the kids. Um, let's face it, every single one of our sites, well, not every single, most of our sites are very different. You've got, uh, two-story uh, elementary schools and, and middle schools versus the older configuration of schools where they're very spread out for the most part. Um, and, and I think that the principals and their staffs know the site. They know their kids, they know their population. And so whatever the district comes up with is, is, we, we need to make sure that our, um, communities at each of the sites has the flexibility to determine how are we going to do this? And, and that can-do attitude is, okay, here's where we're going. How are we going to accomplish it? Pull everybody in. You cannot do this in an isolated position or a position from the district level when it gets down to the operations and kind of the tactics of how we're going to go about this. Um, everybody needs to, uh, certainly be involved in this. Um, one, one of the things that it was kind of interesting by a number of emails that we've received is that the writer of the email is acknowledging that is that the writer of the email is acknowledging that we're, we as a district and we as a board are in kind of a no-win situation because no matter what we do, a hundred percent, fifty percent, all distance learning, um, not everyone is gonna be happy. That is to be expected. Um, and and it was kind of, kind of nice that they say it plain as day is that um, there's a lot to do, there's a lot to figure out, and no matter what you do, you're gonna be right and you're gonna be wrong. So that was just, I guess, a noteworthy thing to mention to everybody. One of the things that concerns me too is that I don't want to delay this too much because, actually, I don't want to delay it at all anymore. Um, because we need to have lead time. That lead time allows everybody to do their work that they need to do, communicate what they need to do, and figure out plans and strategies to get this going. Um, so and I I think that Dr. Wash, you had mentioned about the distance learning. I was under the impression that no matter what model we use, um, distance learning will absolutely be an option. And I would support that if there's any question in anyone's mind that um all the models, all the levels should have the avail- availability of distance learning, which I do see level one through four. Um, it it does have that. And so that's a go. Go for it. Get it done. Get it moving. Um, support it however we need to. Um, but again, that lead time allows us uh the ability to give the people on the ground the work, the time to do the work that they need. Um, and with that, um, I think that, you know, the the idea of people in high-risk um groups, the uh Mr. Neely's idea about we, you know, we need to know the numbers uh so that we can attack that problem. Um, and so uh, yeah, all of these things need to come forward, but we can't. We've got to make a decision. We've got to move forward. And with that, I'll hold any other comments uh till later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heberly. Uh, Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Nava. Um, I have a couple of questions for Dr. Wash. Um, first of all, um, in listening to my fellow board members' comments, I think um would it not be easier if we picked a opening? And then we would find out how many picked up what type of opening we're gonna do, which allowed a community then to uh make decisions regarding V R A. Is that true?
Yes, Mr. Porter. I was gonna mention that uh when board was finished with their comments. I know that um there is interest in knowing which, how many students will would choose the distance learning option. Some will know right now, some parents will know right now that they're gonna choose the distance learning. Others will want to know the other piece of it. Is it gonna be full-time in class or is it gonna be the hybrid and then that would determine their their decision. So for some, they know now. For others, they'll want to know the other model.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, um, we've delayed the, uh, you proposed a delayed start. With the recent spike in the county and across the state of California, uh, would you be also entertaining delaying the start further?
Yes.
Okay, now, um, of course, we'd be following the county guidelines. Um, and of course, um, I really think we need to have in place, if a teacher does test positive or a student tests positive, we need to have scenarios in place to uh handle that situation, and I'm sure you're gonna work on that as well. As far as uh the uh remote learning, um, who's gonna oversee that?
Um, well, that's a good question. Uh, at the high school, uh, we anticipate that it would be each principal uh because they will be able to manage it. It's part, be part of their scheduling process. Um, as Mr. McGregor pointed out with the elementary, um, we are looking at whether it's gonna be site-based or central.
Okay, so uh you don't have a plan yet in place for who's gonna oversee it uh from K through eight, is that correct?
It would be K six. Uh, right now, it's Mr. McGregor.
Okay, thank you very much. And so that's what something they'll be working on, whether they go from one original site to um a centralized site. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Now, in regards to your uh amount of sanitation, do we have enough available for us to start today if we had to? In terms of uh P P V sanitizer?
Uh, to start, I I'm sorry, Mr. Porter, to start today and to go for how long? I would turn that over to Mr. Khan.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Wash. Um, President Nava, members of the board, Mr. Porter, um. Right now, we we utilize two um disinfectant products. One is the um electrostatic fogger. The product is Clorox three sixty. Um, um, that's a a two-part uh uh product. We need the the electrostatic wand and then we need the concentrated product. Um, we believe we're getting, we've ordered fifty ones. We presently have sixty in the district. Excuse me. We've ordered fifty ones. We presently have six in the district. Um, this is a product that can basically sanitize a room in a matter of seconds.
That's not sandy. Now, on the sanitizer for hands, Mr. Khan, are we being able to use alcohol base now?
No, we've always, we've always planned to use it. Um, um, yes.
Have you looked at buying through distilleries?
Um, we have not yet.
Okay, because a lot of distilleries now across the nation are um providing hand sanitizer. Okay, um, I guess uh the the really big thing for me is, this goes back to Dr. Wash. Is there any scientific data that produces um which model would be the best to minimize the spread of the disease to students and teachers?
Well, Mr. Porter, that's a depend, it depends question. Uh, the fewer people that you come in contact with um as an impact, uh the type of health measures that you put in place when there are um more people around also impacts it. Um, so right now, we have permission from county public health to go either way.
But is there any scientific data saying that? Because we're not a hospital. We're a school.
Correct.
And we're not, we're not bringing in COVID nineteen people. So which, is there any scientific data showing which model is the most effective?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I'm sure that there's scientific data to show support for different models or and issues with different models.
Okay, um, I don't want to take too much time because we've gone pretty long. Um, I do think, this is my personal, is that we need to open up later. Uh, if we are gonna open up. And the reason why I say that is, I don't think we're ready. We need to be able to, if a COVID nineteen situation breaks out, uh stop on a dime and give nine seconds back to those students. And our teachers need to be prepared for that. We also need to have uh admin ready to assist teachers um in providing uh online capabilities. And um, I don't know if we have that available yet. Plus, I'm also worried about how robust our remote learning is or our virtual remote academy is. So uh I have some issues and uh my main concern right now is that we open up at a later date that's been proposed. Thank you.
Mr. Porter, can I clarify, uh, if you don't mind? When you say open up later, do you mean for students or students and staff?
Well, I believe that we're gonna have to do some um P D for staff. So when I say open up, I'm talking about when we bring the students in. So in that situation, um, and again, this is me just the back of my mind. I'm looking at opening up on the twenty-fourth with the week before that being used to um and what model we go with, I don't know yet. But with the week before being used for teachers and s- and students, students coming in staggered by Alpha uh to learn the the new way of hygiene, uh lunch. Uh, obviously, you can't have lunch in the cafeteria. How are we gonna work out food services? Um, we also need to look at um um what we're gonna do with regards to uh bathrooms and having portable bathrooms available. Who's gonna use them? So I think those those are big factors. And I think teachers, of course, need to be brought up to snuff on how they're gonna be doing remote learning if the COVID nineteen increases. And uh it is complete change from what we've done. What we did last uh March and through to June was we allowed them, or July, excuse me. Um, basically, it was a free pass. Now we're gonna be having accountability, which is gonna be a completely new ballgame for um teachers and parents. And we have to have that in place. Uh, so I think that's very important. So I have a lot of questions about that, but I'm gonna uh continue doing research. And um, you know, we have another meeting tomorrow night to make a decision. But I am leaning towards us starting at a later date and I I chose the twenty-fourth because that'll give us more time to do preparation, more time to learn about which faculty um can teach in the classroom and cannot, given their health conditions. It'll also give us more time to build up a stockpile of P P E and um also give us more time on how we're going to train teachers and then train the students on how to deal with the proper hygiene. Again, this is as Mr. Neely said and Mr. Heberly, we're in a new waters here. And uh whatever we do, um, you know, not everybody's gonna like. But I'd like to see us completely prepared for all the situations. And as Mr. Neely very eloquently said, we need everybody involved. And that includes uh our teachers heavily involved in this because they're the people that come in contact with the students the most. And of course, we need our classified as well because they're doing the cleaning afterwards. And they're also giving the food services. So those people, we need to get more information from them, what they'd like to see to create uh less anxiety for them. But at the same time, we gotta make sure that we provide a very robust education for our students. So I believe we need more time personally for our admin team here and admin teams at the sites to prepare for all the different scenarios that we've never participated in before. And that's my statement about start times. Thank you very much for answering my questions.
Uh, Mr. Nava, if you, I would like to um just clarify one point and point out. If the board is looking at um the scenario or the level that is going to provide the most safety for for students and teachers, you're looking at level one. I mean, you're keeping everybody at home um is the scenario that that's going to be the scenario that's going to protect folks the most in terms of health. So that's, if if you're concerned, if folks are concerned about um the health and safety aspect and wanting the very most, that the model that represents the most precaution, it would be staying with level one. But we know that there are so many other factors involved um that makes this so much more complex, um, that.
Well, Dr. Wash, I don't think anyone's looking at level one across the board unless.
I understand that. I, that's why the issue is so complex uh because there is so much more involved that um makes the level one for everybody uh pretty much impossible at this point.
Well, the best thing, everybody on bubble and, you know, walk around in Saran Wrap, but we can't do that.
Correct.
So uh we do know that we need to have face-to-face with our teachers and we have to provide that which will be most safe for all students and staff. Thank you, Dr. Wash, and uh thank you, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. As I, as I understand, we will have to be prepared for everything. I know Mr. Neely had a list a mile long. Every other board member has a list. I'm sure that uh the cabinet or the people that are responsible to prepare these these schools to have an effective education and a safe environment for all will be done. Anything we do is a new experience. It's an, it's experimental. We don't know whether it's gonna be success or not. So we are, we are going to choose a model that uh hopefully will uh fit everybody and everybody will not be happy, but most of them will be happy, hopefully. Mr. Neely, did you have a question? Yes. Yes.
We cannot hear, Mr. Neely.
Uh, you got muted? Are you muted, sir? Unmute yourself.
How's that? I'll try that button. Two buttons I had to place. All right. Dr. Wash, uh, mentioned that level one is the safest, but somebody else has a microphone on. But um, no, it may be the safest from the coronavirus, but there are so many other issues that come into play when we keep these kids apart. Uh, and so we have to recognize that as well. Um, I was uh speaking with Mr. Heberly about this and uh he he was saying that uh he had read or was told by a a professional that the suicide rate was up four hundred percent.
Yes.
And and so level one i- is not necessarily the safest because there are all kinds of other issues involved. This thing is not simple. You know, so that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Neely. Uh, let's get outside. I'm gonna hear.
Okay, thanks, President Nava. Um, a lot of things that I, on my list have already been covered, so I just want to mention that the goal, of course, is to start full-time in person. But I don't see how we can do that at this time. Uh, I do believe distance learning ought to be considered a given and it should be in all four of these levels. In fact, I was surprised that we should start incorporating in our school, even if we didn't have this coronavirus thing. Um, uh, yeah, again, so full-time rigor is just not really appropriate at this time unless we have many modifications and I favor modifications that would allow the most FaceTime. Um, full-time distance learning, I don't think was a particularly roaring success. I think it could, it'll be, it'll be better the second time around or as we continue. But I I really believe at all levels, from kindergarten all up to seniors in high school, that there needs to be uh FaceTime involved and the more that we can do in a safe manner, the better. Uh, one idea I haven't heard floated yet is uh the old year-round school schedule. If we use that schedule, we'd have one-third of our students off-campus at any given time, which might make it a lot simpler to uh s- uh use um social distancing techniques, especially at at the high school when uh you got big people there and in larger classes. So um, uh, yeah, okay, that that's most everything else has already been covered, but those are a couple of ideas and where I'm standing right now. Um, I uh, yeah, I want to move up those levels as fast as we possibly can, but it's gotta be safety has gotta be the most important thing. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Nava. Uh, Mr. Freitas.
Thank you, Mr. Nava. Um, one of the questions, and and I appreciate my colleagues for their very thorough questioning and uh their comments. Uh, one of the questions I haven't heard so far is uh thermometers. Are we gonna have uh infrared thermometers available for our schools? And would we be taking students' temperatures, employees' temperatures, staff's temperatures before the beginning of school?
Mr. Freitas, members of the board, we have talked about that. Um, the county guidance does not require it. It gives us flexibility with that. Uh, what we have thought is that um we don't wanna cause a backlog on entrance uh times and procedures in taking time to take temperatures, if even if there's half the population there, a high school that could be a thousand students um would be quite a task, uh but it could be possible. Um, so we have not um developed procedures for that. That has not been something that has been in our plans. We have talked about self-help checks and um having staff, uh giving all staff um a checklist on things that they can do themselves before they come to work and also parents to self-check their children. We know that that's not foolproof. Uh, but that could be a way that um we could have folks self-check themselves and have uh an option with the the county um new guidance.
Thank you, Dr. Wash. Um, I think every single person in this room and probably every single person listening to this meeting and every single person in our district would agree with the statement that there is no better way to teach our kids than having them be in a classroom with our amazing teachers. And there is a reason that we've used that model for over a hundred years, and that's because it is so darn successful. And I don't think anyone else would also a- a- agree that one of the surest ways to ensure that you do not get the virus is if you stay home and have no contact with any individuals. But of course, we cannot be a society that stays at home and doesn't have contact with other individuals. And somewhere, we have this balancing of in between of how we're gonna provide the best education to our students with the least amount of risk to themselves and to every member of the Lodi Unified Family. So uh, I'm looking forward to hearing more options as to this. But I am in favor of the highest standards of safety. And following not only this uh the letter of the guidelines, but the spirit of the guidelines and take the guidelines to the highest amount of standard so that we would never ever be responsible for anyone becoming injured uh on our watch. Uh, I've been that way as a prosecutor. Uh, and I am going to be that way as a board member and ensure that we have the highest safety, safety standards. Um, I propose that we delay the start to uh August seventeenth, two weeks. I'd also be in support of Mr. Porter's suggestion that we go three weeks to the twenty fourth. Uh, and for the many of the exact same reasons. I think that it provides chances for training of uh individuals. I think it provides training for uh our students that we can bring them in on a staggered basis so that uh the new norm can be explained to them. And uh the school that they left before spring break will be so much safer going forward. Um, I also agree with my colleagues and and uh, Ms. Neely, you hit it out of the park with this one. Uh, this is attitude. Um, we need a can do attitude that we're gonna provide the best and safest education to our kids. And we're, this is definitely a call for all hands on deck and everyone doing everything they power. Because uh, yeah, you all have my support. And uh, I I hope each of you will support this board in making uh whatever we decide here tonight happen. Thank you, Mr. Nava. Those are my comments. At this time, I'm looking forward to hearing, I understand we have fifteen callers and I'm looking forward to continuing my comments and this discussion after hearing from them.
Thank you, Mr. Freitas. Ms. McFarlane.
Thank you, President Nava. Um, again, I'd like to iterate that my, my number one goal would be to have all students in their desk with their teachers face to face, because as we know that students learn better um face to face with teachers, or at least that's what we believe, and I believe it too. Um, I think there's, there's a point here where I agree with Mr. Neely with we have to have the can do, can do attitude, but bigger than that, or more importantly than that, we have to have flexibility and awareness and um and put our fear in our back pocket and understand that every time we step out of our homes, there's a level of fear and chance we're taking. I think in order for me to be comfortable with moving into um a a re-introduction into all, all students in class is the safety component of it. I think teachers need to feel safe, students need to feel safe, and parents need to feel safe. I think um, and it starts with us, the adults. If the adults feel safe and we have the right things in place, we're gonna be able to instill what needs to happen in our students and our staff um to have this be a successful transition. I do believe at the first sign of trouble, we need to weather it and figure out how to move forward. I think if if the levels change during this process, we need to be able to adapt quickly. Having said that, I I can't imagine starting school if we don't have everything in place and not um reassurances. I mean, we physically have things in place. I think teachers need to have everything in their possession to have a safe classroom, not only for them, but their students. And they need to feel that they are supported on each side based on their um physical, emotional, and mental needs, and so do their students. I also believe that there isn't a principal out there that hasn't run a scenario and probably walked through their campus and thought about where they would put their six feet apart stickers and how the kids would come off the bus, and they are probably laying awake every night running new scenarios based on what, what the TV is telling them is changing daily. Um, I also think there's a piece of this puzzle that hasn't been addressed. While we're talking about teachers and classrooms and students, we're also missing a bigger component. What happens in the business office? How do we get things purchased and ordered um from the sites to the sites in a quick manner? How do we assist those custodians to make sure they have everything they need um from a business perspective? Um, I also look at um, because I come from a different world in education, I also look at the workers' comp component. Um, and um, Mr. Khan knows that I have asked a million questions on this and I appreciate all your input. When a teacher comes down with an illness or they think they have an illness, what do we have in place? Now, I know we have a wonderful insurance company that handles that, but what do we do on site? How are those teachers paid? How are they not paid? What what leave do they have to use until they are paid? And how quickly can the business office turn it around? Um, I think that is unbelievable, um unbelievably important. And I think both CSEA employees and um certified employees need to know and classified employees all need to know, including um, you know, paras, I could go down the line. There isn't a person on this, on a campus or in the district office that want to know what happens to me if I get it? Which brings me to my last point. Um, as each of these things are brought forward and we discuss the pros and cons of each one, um, you can't help but say, how does it affect me? What does it do for me? Um, and I think that that is good to take a moment and pause and see how it affects you mentally, emotionally, and physically, but I think you also have to put you in the back, on the back pocket for a minute and think, what's the greater good for everyone? And there isn't a board member sitting here tonight and Gary at home that we haven't been discussing these for weeks. So while you have all the questions out there, we have probably double your questions. Um, and we probably have just as many concerns, and we want everyone to do what's best for their family first and have the faith and the trust in us to be able to keep your children and your teachers and your moms and dads and parents and aunts and uncles and everybody else that comes through the line to pick up their students at school safe. And if we can do that, then I'm in favor of opening for for a regular calendar year with everything in place. Um, Mr. Nava, words of wisdom from you. I pass it to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Actually, very short. As I said, everybody has covered a little bit of it and have asked about what is needed, what we need to have to start to start, start the school year in a proper manner with all the safety involved. We also have discussed the start of school in the fall. We have extension of two weeks, three weeks, and I have uh, I'm sure that uh that decision will have to be be made possibly by tomorrow. And uh, I'd like to say that thanks to all aboard for all their concerns. And uh, Dr. Washer, we, and we expect you to be totally prepared to cover all bases that we've discussed here tonight and then come back with some type of uh uh, uh, plan that you have worked on so the boards is aware of what you have done. Uh, thank you. Uh, I am on muted, am I?
We can hear you.
Okay, all right. Now, uh, I'd like to ask the board, we, we like to end this, this meeting by ten o'clock, impossible. I'd like to ask the board to allow me more time because we have the audience comments. Uh, it's nine sixteen at this point. Any preference from the board? Any suggestions?
I'm, I'm raising my hand like I'm at home trying to get your attention. Uh, Mr. Nava, I, I feel it is extremely important to give any comments and all comments full time and full disclosure and have them have their opinions heard, and if that goes over ten o'clock, I'm perfectly okay with that. I feel that if we can't hear the people that are calling in, they would all be sitting in this office staring at us with those eyes that said, let me talk. So I think um, it would be a disservice to not let them speak and and have their concerns known.
I agree. We need to allow them time to speak.
Okay.
Uh, very close, Mr. Nava. Mr. Nava.
Yes, Mr. Neely.
Board policy, Thursday's address. Somebody's on. Um, that the board can extend the time.
Yes.
The board can extend the time uh once. And it has to be extended to a specific time. So the idea is, is pick a specific time, you extend it once after that. Uh, it has to uh, the board has to turn now. We do have the advantage of having a meeting tomorrow night. And anything that we can't finish here, we might be able to to push over to that meeting. I know that's not exactly the way it should be, but we should, we can put something in. Also, we have another meeting scheduled for Thursday night as well. Well, certainly a point there, okay.
Good point, uh, Mr. Neely. Uh, any preference on the topic?
Eleven.
Eleven o'clock, fine. We got it at eleven o'clock. Thank you, board. Okay, I have comments from the public. I was gonna restrict you to three minutes, but I understand we have fifteen. Is that right, Mr. Freitas? That's your understanding? So I will let you, I I've read the email, emails that you sent in less than three minutes. So if you have something to say that's very uh beneficial, it's not repetitive, then go ahead and do it. Um, uh, Edith, who do we have first?
Mr. Nava. Mr. Nava, a question.
Yes.
Isn't during this time that they have as much time as they want? Uh, I I believe that in our bylaws, aren't they allowed as much time as they want? Uh, my understanding is, is that during report items and other uh agenda items, they, they are allowed to speak. It's more of a discussion period than, than a time limit period. Uh, but the point is, is that it would be very nice to um kind of group comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Heberly.
Thank you, Mr. Heberly, for your point of order on that.
Okay, let's, let's continue on. Uh, Edith, first speaker.
We have Nicole Champeau.
Nicole, you're on.
Hello?
Nicole?
Hello?
Yes, hello.
Hello. Um, I spoke at one of your meetings previously. Thank you for making time for me. Um, many of my um concerns have already been addressed, but I have two main ones still. One is that I, I'm in LVN. I work in an elementary school. And I think that there is a big risk that a lot of people aren't aware of and aren't taking into account. Like you are not going to be able to keep parents from sending their kids in sick. And we already know that this is in the community in San Joaquin County. Um, there is an growing number of cases in states, including California, of multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children, which is very serious and often fatal. And we are still learning about it. And um, one in thirteen children have asthma. And you don't know how many kids have asthma in your school because I'm telling you, so many parents just give their kid their inhaler, say, here, keep this in your pocket. They never fill out their paperwork. They never tell school, and kids are walking around in chronic, like low-grade respiratory distress all the time. And they don't even say anything about it because they're used to it. Um, you know, ten point five percent of the um population is diabetic, um, which is another increased risk factor as well as other forms of autoimmune illness. Um, also, if children, you know, you're um, according to the what, the state website, um, student to teacher ratio is twenty one point seven five to one. And we all know that the classes are much bigger in high schools. You don't have the space and the staff to spread people apart far enough. So you cannot with the resources you have. You don't, you don't have enough teachers. Enough teachers in the state don't exist. Um, so if you send people in, they are taking a risk with their health. People are going to continue to get it because we know it's already in the population. People may very well die. And if students and their parents have the option to stay home to keep their children safe, then I think not extending the same choice to teachers and giving them the option to teach from home is reprehensible morally. So I know, I fully agree that the best way to teach children is face to face and that there is absolutely no substitute for a talented, living, breathing teacher. They are amazing. They have done amazing things for my son, especially over the past twelve weeks. But no student can learn anything and no teacher can learn anything if they're dead. Or, you know, debilitated from organ failure or from organ damage due to COVID-19. And, you know, we already um have a very low um toleration in our public schools for allowing people to knowingly spread illness. You are not allowed to enroll if your um immunizations are not up to date. You know, if you have um signs and symptoms of a long list of known communicable illnesses. And we know this is in the population. So I would encourage you to take these things into consideration moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Valerie next.
Manny Kalua.
Manny, you're on, Manny.
Good evening. Um, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Good evening, members of the board, staff, fellow parents, and members of the public. My name is Manny Kalua, and I am a parent of three students of this district. Two of my kids are in elementary school, Podesta Ranch and John Veer. And also one in high school, which he will be going to bear big next school year. I am here before you today because I would like to urge this board to continue implementing all distance learning, either mandatory or optional for us parents. I know several board members have uh talked about, and they want to know how many parents are go not going to be sending their school, their kids to schools. And I would like to be the first one to tell you that I will not be sending three of my kids to school. Um, whatever decision you're gonna make um tomorrow. Um, you're already aware that the number of cases have spiked drastically. I think it's been mentioned multiple times before. And also um, the, the situation with the Ventas Health Lodi Memorial. Um, my wife works there, so I got to know that uh before I even got to the news. Um, I also understand that this is not a competition, but it's sad to say that our county surpassed Sacramento County with the COVID nineteen cases. Um, I personally believe that going beyond level one, as Dr. Washer mentioned earlier, is a premature decision and we are putting our children at risk. It is already hard enough for adults in general to follow social distancing. And putting this responsibility to our children is, in my opinion, it's just not feasible. Um, even if face masks were to be implemented in the classroom, we all know that our children will not be wearing it the whole time. I know that because I have three kids. There is also a risk that they will lose this before the end of their classes. Um, it will be hard for them to concentrate if they were be wearing masks during classes. I think it's easy to conclude that it only takes one person, either employee, staff, or students to get infected, and the whole school will be at risk. So does the district really want to make this, to take this chance? Um, I know one of the board members um said today, it's, it's, it's a no-win situation for you guys. Um, therefore, I, on behalf of myself and other parents that I spoke to before this meeting, we urge this board to consider all distance learning for the upcoming school year and personally not go beyond level one. Uh, thank you for giving us a chance to talk today, and I, I hope you'll take this consideration. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Manny. Next.
Next, next up is Michelle Orgon.
Michelle, you're on, Michelle.
Good evening, President Nava, members of the board. Um, thank you again for taking the time. Um, if I could first ask a clarifying question. Um, tonight's meeting on this board um report um is coming to the board, um taking questions, getting public input. Um, is the intention for tomorrow night's meeting just to then make a decision for some think time tonight, tomorrow, before the board decides? Or will there be more comments or some of the um questions that the board asked um come back with answers tomorrow if through the chair um maybe Dr. Washer could answer?
I can answer that. The, the audience will have input on tomorrow's meeting.
Okay, so will some of the questions? Okay, so will some of the questions that were asked already be, will staff bring back some of the answers to those questions?
That's our intention.
This is Kathy. We will do our very best.
Okay, thank you. Representing the teachers, I have to tell you that, you know, we were surprised at this leveling and knowing what, well, the changes last week from the state and the Public Health Office left many scratching their heads. What does this mean? How is this going to go forward? As we had a safety meeting last Friday, we were, are very concerned with starting school without all the appropriate P P Es. We do see on level two that it talks about some sports at the bottom. Do we have a list of which sports are referenced to that? Is it those that the county said would open up first?
Mr. Nava, members of the board, when that was written, it was based on what we would be learning and the guidance we would be getting from the county that had not come at that time yet. So there was no specifics in mind at that time. But as the county allows, then of course, we will follow suit.
Okay, so we're looking then from the county as to which, say, athletic teams then would open up. Thank you. We do believe, I don't remember who asked about the thermometers. We understand that that may create a backlog or may hold up entering. But we have heard from our nurses on the Safety Committee meeting and whether they are, before they get on the bus, if they're already running a fever, to stop them at that point in time before they get on the bus or before they walk into and are roaming around the playground before school starts, having that scan of temperature. Although we do understand that you can be asymptomatic and presymptomatic. So, but if they are running a fever, we certainly don't want them intermixing with students. And believe there is quite a bit of value of the self-check and that scanning as some places scan by handheld devices. We find some value in that. And whether it's, you know, we know in some of the things that the county released before certain things can happen, that you do take the temperature. I know that there are families that don't have thermometers. So we would ask that some of those assessments definitely be asked before we go. And, you know, I know we can't have every family make sure that they have a thermometer. But as our nurse stated and every teacher knows, sometimes the kid is sick and they're sitting in the office then waiting for a parent to pick them up. And we certainly don't want to have quarantine rooms with lots of kids in them. So that would be something we'd ask as we look at making sure we have the equipment to open. I appreciate the recognizing of wanting all protective hand sanitizer there. We understand the reasonability and feasibility of trying to get hot water everywhere. It would be nice. But we do know that there are some local businesses that are, some distilleries that are changing over to get some of that hand sanitizer. We hope that we can, you know, follow through with getting some of those. I appreciate, I believe it was Mr. Heberly that talked about the suicide rate. As you know and are familiar, we have lost some students this year that have dramatically impacted our fellow students. We also understand that everyone right now is going through a bit of trauma with all of this. And we would ask that we look at what can we do as a district to both help meet the needs of employees that are going through this trauma so that they better can handle helping and assisting children, whether they're the person that works, the crossing guard, to the bus driver, to the classroom teacher, that we all have some understanding as to how to speak to students going through this as we've been going through. And as I think it was Ms. McFarland said, you know, taking the self-awareness and turning it around what's everyone else going through. And so I think that's important as we start out the school year, to be very important that we do that as a whole. And I appreciate the coming together. I think, at least with Leah, you know, we're ready to roll up our sleeves and get to work. And, you know, that can-do attitude of what's best. And appreciate the understanding about our teachers who do have those maybe underlying conditions and expressing concern and how we would address that. So thank you for that, speaking to that and understanding that that is going on. You have a dedicated bunch of teachers that want to be with their students. And we know education is social. And teachers by nature are also social. So this is tearing them apart at their core to not be with their students. So that's all I have for now. Thank you for your time and your comments tonight.
Thank you, Michelle. Valerie, next?
Next. Next up, we have Elizabeth Ing.
Elizabeth, you're on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I am Elizabeth Ing. I teach at Lodi High School. And I currently teach conceptual physics, but I have taught A P Physics and Robotics and C P Physics. I've run their Science Olympiad program, their Rocketry Program, helped run their Apple Science Outreach Program, their 3D Print Lab. And in addition to that, I've also run my own businesses, one of which was a children's science outreach program for the city of Galt. I ran it through the city of Galt. However, it was owned and operated by myself. That brings me to the fact of distance learning. If we intend to implement distance learning, especially for science, we need to consider what I would call shoebox science kits. We are going to be up against, excuse me, we are going to be up against private homeschool companies, which parents can choose for free. Now, those companies are going to provide parents with supplies for kids to do hands-on science. If we don't want some of our top students to be siphoned off, we need to be competitive. We can provide that for a reasonable cost to the district. However, we have to have time. So I greatly appreciate the idea of pushing back the initial start date so that we have time to plan for this. I know that it's doable, and it's doable for a reasonable cost because, well, I ran such a program. I had to purchase my own supplies. I had to plan the lessons and carry them out with kids that ran from preschool age up through eighth grade. So I know it's doable for kids to do this on their own at home if they're given the proper tools. That being the case, we need to make sure that we have time to put this together for the kids. If you tell teachers a week before that we're going to distance learning, we're back at the same scenario that we were at this spring. It puts us in a really hard position. I highly believe in teaching science to kids, and I highly believe in hands-on learning. I have an elementary credential as well as a secondary credential. I've worked, like I said, with kids all the way from preschool up through college. They do learn best if they have some hands-on materials. But we can't do that instantaneously. The idea being, if we put these kits together and we get them checked out to kids, just like we do school lunches, if they're gonna be on remote learning, let's have this set up so that it's ready to roll when the school year starts. They get a kit. It may run between ten, fifteen, maybe twenty dollars for years' worth of equipment that allows them to do some hands-on experiments at home. I just have real concerns about not having any kind of competitiveness with these other programs that are gonna be offered. We have to be realistic and say, you know, if we lose too many students, we do lose money. And that's just a fact. And looking at it from a business angle, we know if we lose students, we lose money. But if we provide optimum remote learning experience, then we get to save those students whose parents would seek out other programs. I just request that we have that advance notice because without that advance notice, we're back where we were. Now, I felt that I had pretty good success rates with my students. And speaking to the suicide prevention portion, we do a daily check-in for attendance of my classes, which has an option that kids check off on there, saying that they need to talk to somebody, that something's going on. And that has been utilized. That has been utilized for students who are having severe emotional problems, kids who are in the process of losing a family member, who had somebody just diagnosed with cancer, somebody who is considering the worst-case scenario for themselves. So there are ways that we can work with kids through a remote learning, but we need time to get that developed. And we can develop that together as teachers and teams, but only if we're given that planning time. So I would request that. And I would request that we look into this ability to have hands-on kits for science, but also maybe for elementary school teachers because just having strictly virtual digital learning for small kids, that's rough. That's really, really rough. From somebody who's been there, done that, and worked with the older kids, they need that hands-on component. And so we need to put that together as a district, realizing that, yes, it's a small cost, but it's a small cost to help save our ADA and to help save our attendants and our students from being filtered out by other programs. So I appreciate you guys looking at the push-off of the initial start date. And I would ask that we are given sufficient time to plan for remote learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Valerie, next?
Next up is Karen Jackson.
Good evening. Good evening, President Nava, Dr. Washer, and members of the board. I've had the pleasure of working for Lodi Unified School District since 2001. During my time with the district, I have seen the district lead with top-notch educational opportunities. I have always been confident that through collaboration and careful planning, the needs of all learners would be met with rigor and creativity. This spring, here comes COVID-19, and the entire playing field drastically changed. Yet with multiple hours of planning and collaboration, some false starts and re-charting of our direction, teachers created online learning environments that met the needs of their students. Was it perfect? Of course not. We honed our craft because providing rich educational opportunities for children is imprinted upon our souls. That's really the heart of teaching, isn't it? The mesh of data and the art of the craft to create the best learning environment. And so I'm surprised that the district is discussing opening schools fully in a few short weeks. What does the data say? A twenty-four percent increase in COVID cases in seventy-two hours. What does the data say? Patients turned away from Lodi Memorial Hospital. What does the data say? Beijing has already shut down schools, which they just recently opened. What does the data say? The current COVID death rate is five percent. What does the data say? That the school board is still meeting remotely because you are fully aware of the danger and are rightfully protecting yourselves. Now is not the time to throw data and science out the window. Now is not the time to be anything less than scrupulously cautious as we move forward to ensure that the lives of students and staff are protected. I understand the need for returning to school. I really wish it was as easy as opening the doors and handing out a mask in the hopes that students wear one and wiping down desks and doorknobs. The science says it is not this easy. One hundred twenty-three thousand deaths says it is not this easy. Your decisions will impact lives. And any return that does not follow the science may result in avoidable deaths of children, staff, or community members. Do we simply shrug our shoulders and say, whoops, when that happens? We need to rely on science and not on magical thinking that ignores the seriousness of COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Valerie, next?
Up next is Kristi Thomas.
Kristi?
Yes, good evening. You know, it's bad with introvert, she won't speak. She's my shaky voice. I'm a parent and a teacher in this district. I'm speaking to you tonight as a parent as you seem to be more willing to listen to parents over teachers. Just ask the task force. I was made to speak up on behalf of my daughter, who is a student at Tokyo, and would like to share some of her input. She does well academically and ended last school year with straight A's. However, she hated trying to do school from home. She thrives on having a schedule and routine and just couldn't get out of the habit of doing schoolwork at night. Distance learning does not appeal to her. That being said, she's nervous about returning to school too soon and without the proper safety protocols in place. During the regular school year, the bathrooms were often short on needed supplies, such as paper and paper towels. How can you assure us that it will be different now? How can we be confident that students will be able to even adequately wash their hands while they return? Would there be more custodial staff at each site to handle the increased workload? Another concern is masks. Now, I know that you don't seem to be too popular in the room. But this pandemic doesn't care about what's popular or what your political views are. My daughter brought up the fact that in middle school, they had to wear a lanyard as a form of student identification for their safety while at school. Nobody said those infringed on their rights. They weren't allowed to wear red or the number thirteen for safety reasons as well. I didn't hear anyone say that infringed on their rights. Wearing a mask sucks. Or being hooked up to a ventilator or losing your life would be a whole lot worse. It is very concerning to see board members telling the public that they don't believe in wearing masks. We need to listen to science and medical professionals, not the freedom angels. Remember, a mask is to help protect others from you. If I wore a mask, I'm doing that as a courtesy to you. I ask that you do the same for me and my child.
Thank you, Kristi. Next, Valerie?
Next is Anne Suella Garcia.
Hi, good evening. I'm here. Hi. Welcome. Thanks for having me. A few days ago, I read that a current board member supported reopening our schools full-time with modifications. So I went to the CDC website, and I was trying to see what those modifications would be and how would they be implemented? Because the cases of COVID-19 are increasing, as people have mentioned. Lodi Memorial, South Korea closed schools five days after they opened in May. Beijing has closed schools. People are outraged because they have to wear masks. They don't even pick up our kids now when they're sick. Why would they come get them if we think they have COVID-19? So I thought, based on the CDC needs, what do I need in my classroom to go back to school? What do I need? I'm also a parent, which I'll talk about at another time, but right now I'm thinking about as a teacher. I need to be held harmless on my sick leave during this pandemic so I can take the days I need if I need them, not worry about my family or finances or break in service. And the CDC recommends that. I need time to disinfect my room when a group of students leave and before another group enters. I know that right now there is not enough custodial staff to do the work that we currently have. How will it be possible for them to do it when we're required to return? I also know that I need hand sanitizer, soap, cleaning supplies, and paper towels that actually wipe things down. The ones that we have now seem to repel water rather than absorb them. And I know that because I was in my classroom today, and I had my husband bring my own paper towels. The CDC recommends time to disinfect. It recommends having cleaning supplies. The CDC also recommends that our children's supplies are separate from each other. I need tubs or buckets to hold the belongings of each student. The cubbies I have are not large enough to hold their things and not touch other items. For individual supplies, I've already written a Donors Choose project to provide individual basic toolkits, kind of what we just heard about for science for all the Julia Morgan kindergarten students, one for home and one for school. This project will serve seventy-five kids and was fully funded for $2,148 by Friends, Family, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And it's funded because I knew I wouldn't get that from my school. I also have written a mini-grant that I'm for books for each kindergarten student's personal to discuss and plan with my partners and other professionals and what will work at my school and in kindergarten.
Anne, we're losing some of your
A lot to tackle and communicate urge us to help figure out a plan. Communication is key. Public and as in-person meetings. Excuse me?
Anne, we can't hear you.
More in state.
Ms. Garcia?
Is she still on?
What happened, Valerie?
I'm still on.
Okay, we can't hear you.
But I'm finished. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we have Jen Castle.
Hi, Jen. Go on, Jen.
Hello, President Nava. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Great. Hello, President Nava, board members and Dr. Washer. My name is Jen Castle and I've been a teacher for Lodi Unified for twenty-seven years. Thirteen at Bear Creek, fourteen at Toke. I've been on many committees in those years, but I'm here tonight to talk to you about the task force because I believe it's been overlooked. Several board members indicated in their comments at the beginning of tonight's meeting that they've been in favor of a full five-day option for quite some time. I'm just so surprised by that. Why weren't the task forces told about the board interest in that option? That plan was never shared with the task force, not even during our meeting that took place less than a week ago, never even mentioned. And Mrs. McFarland, I appreciate your addressing this topic earlier. But perhaps board members need to understand the task force was given partial information. We didn't just misunderstand the job. It wasn't transparency. We didn't get the full information. We all want to believe, and we are frequently told, that district committees provide input from stakeholders. And they allow teachers the chance to share their expertise and help inform district policy. We all agree that this is the purpose, right? There wasn't a misunderstanding. And you know what? You should want people like me to serve on those committees. I interact with a hundred and fifty high school students every day. I've taught thousands. You have fifteen hundred teachers in this district and we are your boots on the ground. Our voices should matter a great deal to you. So imagine our surprise when everyone was told that the school board would be considering two reopening plans tonight. But the task force, a group that's been paraded before the public as instrumental during this crisis, has only seen one. What happened there? The task force includes teachers, parents, admin, classified counselors, all the stakeholders. We've met dutifully once a week for months to troubleshoot. We've been described by you, the board, as a think tank and offered to the public as proof that the district was responding democratically and transparently to this crisis. But now there are two reopening options in front of you and your task force has only seen one. In effect, you are conveniently sidestepping your own committee. This indifference is troubling. It's far from the first time it's happened too. This breathing right past the committees has become a pattern and don't think your teachers, parents, and community haven't noticed. You seem to want the appearance of stakeholder involvement without the bother of actually having to really include them. It's insincere, it's misleading to the public, and it's a top-down management style that leaves teachers feeling voiceless and used. Cooperation, innovation, transparency, trust, these should all be given. But in a crisis, these are essential. Your committees should not be simply window-dressing while the real decision-making happens behind closed doors at the hands of a few. There is too much at stake, especially now. We need everyone invested and working together like Mr. Neely said. So get back to representation and respect. Do more than just convene and brag about your committees. Include them, really listen to them, and value their input. Mr. Neely, you're right. You said everyone needs to work together. Yes, we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Valerie, next?
Next up is Jen Dietrich.
Jen Dietrich?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks. So I'm a parent and I've spoken before, so I don't want to take up too much time tonight. I want to thank the teachers that have spoken tonight and I appreciate the board for their questions. You know, we've known that schools are hubs in our community, but it's been exhibited in a whole new way during this crisis. You know, beyond educating our kids, our schools provide critical childcare so parents can work and basic nutrition. I know some kids count on three meals a day at school and physical and social emotional health support. Um, but when I look at the two options that are being discussed most tonight, I'm concerned about our community. Option one, I can send my kid back to school five days a week without recommended physical distancing in the classroom. Because I understand you don't have the staffing or physical space or funding to do so. And no temperature checks, um, and the possibility of going against the governor's order and not requiring masks. The second option is I can keep my kid home for a full year. But then I can't work or I need a job that I can do from home and have flexible work hours. And I have the resources like literacy and financing to support my child's learning at home. And when we just focus on these two options, I don't see them as reasonable options for most families. And I believe that these two choices will create inequitable opportunities for students and risk the safety of our students, educators, and their families and our entire community. I, I want to send my kid back to school full-time, but, but I know it has to be done safely. And with equity in mind, and I, I strongly encourage you to focus your planning efforts on a hybrid approach that will take more health precautions to protect our community and get our kids and communities back on track. And if that takes more time to iron out, especially with the consultation of teachers and staff at the table, I'm all for starting the school year later. And just wanted to add two quick notes, you know, for the students that are learning remotely. I hope that the district sets standards to ensure equity, like a standard amount of synchronous learning each day, you know. Kids need that real-time interaction with teachers and peers, especially for young kids. And, you know, I, I really appreciate everything that teachers in the district did at the end of the school year, you know, in the emergency situation. But we're planning for a full year of instruction. Um, and, and so I, I hope there is thought in, in those, those standards and ensuring equity. And, and the, the other note I wanted to add was, you know, the California School Board Association confirmed that schools are not exempt from the governor's mask requirement in public spaces. Um, so I thank you for your time tonight and look forward to the vote tomorrow.
Thank you, Jen. Valerie, next?
Next up is Mary Valerga Hood.
Good evening, um, board members and Dr. Uh, Dr. Dr. Washer again. Um, I have a couple of, uh, more comments for this particular item. I really like the idea of Mr. Porter's delayed start. I think, um, that is something that you should look at, no matter what, what way you're going. I also want, uh, I wanted to make sure that, um, you are not being influenced too much by the group of people with whom you met today. They are part of, uh, uh, the Freedom Angels. Most of them are not part of, are not, uh, parents in our district. And their agenda is anti-vaccination. And so I just wanted to bring that to your awareness. They posted the Lodi video on their, uh, website, which is called Freedom Angels. And so on that, on that web, on that video, it, it showed most of you not wearing masks either. So that was, that was disconcerting uh, on that issue. And we're all, all talking about trying to be safe. So I want to make sure that their voice isn't heard more than the voices of the teachers in our district since those parents are on admission. We talked about this whole issue being political. And please don't fall into their politis- politization of this particular issue. They, they're, they're not somebody you should be really, um, honed in on for valued opinions. I think you should listen to vetted teachers, vetted community members, and vetted parents in our district. It was dis- uh, disheartening for me to know that these people have your, your ear when, uh, let's make sure there, it's our own parents that have your ear. Hopefully that, um, that was, I, I was disappointed for myself to, to know about that group. Um, I do really strongly suggest level two, which is the hybrid model. I really think that it is easier, as I mentioned before, to level up than it is to go back down. Start slow and move forward. Kids are resilient. We do need to be in the classroom. I understand that. But we need to go carefully instead of having to pull back and throw everybody out of balance again. So I really strongly recommend that we have a hybrid model, distance learning, and a fifty-fifty. I am, um, those of you, you may not know me, um, I have been, uh, this is just completed thirty-eight years in education and just completed my master's in STEM. And so I do not feel like I'm washed up at all. I am invigorated. I am excited for distance learning. I really put my all in it. I sent Mr. McGregor some of my comments and, um, successes that I had with my class. Is it easy? No. Does it require a million hours of work? Yes. Does it allow us to differentiate? Yes. And I am on board for any distance learning model that, uh, I'm here for that purpose. My concern, um, um, for, uh, school sites and for going back to the politization of this particular coronavirus. That everybody at my site believes that this is, since, it, this is serious. It's, it's not just a one-time thing. It's not the flu. And some sites, some principals may be stronger and understand that. And other people like, eh, this is no big deal. And I need assurances that every principal will follow the same standards for sanitation, for class supplies. Because we know that it is a human touch that makes a difference in the lives of children. However, I hit a magic number this year, which I'm, I don't even want to say. So it puts me in this category that I really don't want to be in. Um, I'm still twenty-five in my mind and that's how I look at it. Um, for my distance learning, my students did a virtual egg drop. They worked on genius projects and became their own genius. So it is a time for us to excel as a distance learning school district. For offering student, we've had some other teachers speak about the differentiation models. And I think this is our time to excel in that. And we need to look at not just the standard workbook pages and all of that. That's not what's going to make it stand out. So I'm on board with that. Um, but I'm very trepidatious about going back into my classroom without some assurances from the school board and from site principals that every safety matter will be covered. I, I just need that assurance. We have worked really hard in our district. I've been in, in our district a long time. All of those thirty-eight years, except for four of them, have been with Lodi Unified. I value this district. I value what we do. And I really want us all to be working together because I think value is huge, especially in this time. I also have one more little item. I spoke with the manager at Staples and for regarding hand sanitizer. And he would be happy to order hand sanitizer for the district. He's not sure he can fulfill the entire order. And it would be twenty percent discount. So I have his name and number if, um, Mr. Khan needs that and he's, would be happy to work with us on that particular issue. But level two is the way to go. It's easier to level up than to make parents find scrap for daycare. Parents will be resilient if you believe in the product that you give them. If you believe and you state for, this is level two, this is why, everybody will be on board, but we need to have the same vision. And that's one of the things missing in our district right now is the same vision. I've never seen it this low. I've been here a long time. I care about what I do. I care about our students. Thinking back that I've had touched so many different lives in this district. You just, every day makes a difference. And we need to all work together to provide the best for our students in this very, very difficult time. And level two is where we need to start and move on. And thank you very much for the opportunity to speak again.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you. Valerie, next?
Next up is Michelle Wolf.
Michelle?
Hello. That's an awful lot of feedback.
Valerie, are we having a problem?
We had a problem with Michelle, so we will come back to her and we will proceed to Jenny Miller.
Okay, Jenny Miller. Jenny, you're not, you're on.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay. All right, thanks. Um, thanks for taking my comment and thank you, uh, especially to Mr. Neely and Mr. Heberly for coming out to meet with parents and students today. We really appreciate you taking the time to do that. Um, on the comment about the Freedom Angels, just as a clarification, there was one representative today from that foundation and three last week. Um, I am not, and most of the parents as well that were there are not anti-vaxers, so to speak. We, some of us want vaccination reform and non-mandated vaccinations, but that's for another day. Um, the majority of the parents and students at both protests, we're, we're Lodi Unified families and we're there solely to discuss our concerns about guidelines being decided without our public input. Um, moving on, I appreciate Mr. Heberly's comment earlier that we need to make decisions now. Um. So in honor, I have a quick yes or no question. I'm answering them and then I'll finish. My first question is, will you, um, the Lodi Unified School District for sure be enforcing mandatory masks according to the governor's order? Any answer on that?
Mute. Uh, we will, we'll check on that, okay? Right now is a mandatory mask by the governor. Uh, might change tomorrow or the day after.
Okay, uh, okay. Um, number two, will the schools be participating in contact tracing?
Not at this time.
Okay. Um, and number three, uh, if and when you have to modify procedure or close the school, will, schools, will you communicate that, that information as soon as possible?
Dr. Washer, can you answer that?
Mr. Nava, I think I heard the question as if and when we need to close the school, um, during the year, would we communicate that as soon as possible? Was that the question?
Jenny, was that the question? Ms. Miller?
She was cutting in and out. I'm not sure I got the whole question.
Mrs. Miller?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, my, my third question, yeah, my third question is, um, if you have to modify the, um, the changes at the schools or shut down the schools, will you communicate that, um, as soon as possible with parents?
Absolutely.
Okay, and I'm sure that you, you do, you guys have so many different avenues for communicating. It's ridiculous, in a good way. Um, okay, so thank you for answering those questions, kind of. I'm worried about the mandatory masks being a, an unlawful order since he's got, the governor has a temporary restraining order on those. But I appreciate that it's kind of fluid and we're not sure what's going to happen. Um, I would like to point out that, um, I understand the fear behind this virus and I can understand the increase in numbers is, um, a concern to many people. Um, but we have two thousand five cases out of a population of more than seven hundred and forty in this county. Um, that's a percentage of cases at zero point zero zero three of the population. Um, the death rate is one point nine percent of those cases in this county. Uh, uh, obviously, we don't want any deaths, but, um, that's a very low number. I've seen the data that shows that fifty-nine percent of those cases are in eighteen-to-forty-nine-year-olds. and 8% of those are confirmed cases under 17. I did read a study, a couple of studies from last month, which obviously it's a month away, but one from Switzerland, one from Seattle, and both of them stated students or children were rarely found to transmit the virus. I know there's some differing studies, and they're constantly being changed, but I just thought I'd throw that out there. I get the fear, but like a few of you have said, we've got to get our students in school 100%. So if, as Dr. Wasser says, we can go either model, I... Let's open 100%. And I'm just going to say it.
Valerie, we didn't catch Ms. Miller's last words.
Okay, and I believe we have lost connection with her.
Okay.
So I believe we'll have to move on.
Let's move on.
We'll try Michelle Wolf again.
Hello.
Hello, Michelle.
Good evening, Dr. Wasser and the school board. My name is Michelle Wolf, and I teach at Lodi High. And I also have two students in the district, one in junior high and one in high school. Let me start by making an observation. You are all meeting without the public there for your health and safety to keep you from contracting COVID-19. Recent reports from various health organizations have determined that the best way for the illness to spread is through close, prolonged person-to-person contact, especially indoors, which sounds an awful lot like a classroom to me. During a normal five-day week with 100% attendance, I see approximately 150 to 160 students each day. I teach five classes with between 32 and 35 students. One of my classes last year had 38 students in it. They're in my class for 53 minutes at a time in a portable with poor air circulation, non-alcohol-based hand sanitizer that usually runs out by December because there's no way to get it refilled. According to my students, there's very rarely soap in the... Or paper towels in the restrooms. And there's few restrooms that are actually open in the school for them to use. And like other people have said, the restrooms only have cold water. My students are lucky if they have a foot of space between their desks, and there's no way that they're all going to fit in my classroom if we have to have six feet of space between them. But these are the safety guidelines put out by the State Department of Education and the CDC for schools to safely reopen. I've seen my colleagues work through the spring and early summer on a high school task force to come up with reopening plans for hybrid and fully online instruction. Never have they heard about going back 100% as an option. By putting that on the table, their hard work is being negated as well as the safety of the staff and the students. I have several questions just for you to think about as you make your decision. Lodi Unified has approximately 30,000 students. How many of those families were represented by the survey that we took recently? This weekend, Lodi Memorial Hospital reported that they have about 30 staff that have tested positive for COVID-19. They have the best PPP, PPE available to them. If they can't keep their staff safe, how do you plan to keep our staff and students safe? Are you listening to pressure from just a few loud parents who want schools open as childcare facilities so they can go to work instead of looking at all the scientific data about what is safe? Which, from listening to you guys tonight, most of you are looking at the safety guidelines, and I appreciate that. What will happen to a teacher's sick leave if they have to quarantine because a student or staff member comes to school with COVID-19? What will the district do if there are many teachers or other staff who have asthma, diabetes, kidney, heart, lung, or other conditions that make COVID-19 worse and therefore need to take medical leave, which I believe Mr. Neely asked that question earlier? State and local public health experts endorsed the reopening of schools after 14 consecutive days of a downward trajectory of confirmed COVID-19 cases. Have you seen the numbers in San Joaquin County recently? There are currently 91 people in San Joaquin County hospitalized with COVID-19. And as of last Friday, there were only 15 available ICU beds in the entire county. Please think about the health and safety of the teachers, staff, and students when making your decision, making sure all safety measures are attainable and can continue as long as necessary. Please don't just think about the pressure of a few parents who seem to see the teachers and staff in schools as a babysitting service and don't seem to care whether we get sick or not. I think the 50% hybrid model, which I think is the Level 2, is the highest risk that we should take with all the necessary safety precautions when coming back to school. Thank you for your concern for our safety that has been shown in your discussion this evening, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Michelle. Valerie, next?
Next up, we have Lori Salis.
Lori?
Hi, thank you for taking my call. I've crossed out a few of my notes because some other teachers have already addressed my concerns. So forgive me if I'm a little choppy. But first off, I would like to thank you for asking the questions that you did in the beginning. Mr. Neely, thank you for that comprehensive list. I had some of those on my list as well. And also for the suggestion of delaying the start date. Maybe that will make a difference. So as I was listening to all the other speakers, that thought just occurred to me, why can't we have all three options? I've heard from some teachers that said, I'm ready to go back full-time, just like some of the parents. I don't... I'm not comfortable with that. I was concerned yesterday reading the plans to go back fully. And while I want to go back full-time, I would like to insist that the first thing we think about in opening back up is safety, and not only of the students, but the adults working with the students. The state supports the full opening of schools when there's a two-week downward trajectory of cases. And currently, we're seeing a rise. And as some of the other people stated, three weeks ago in our county, we had 14 hospitalizations, and now we have 91. And this has nothing to do with the increased testing, and it concerns teachers who feel that their safety is sometimes not a priority. I need to be able to trust you with my safety and the safety of my family. And a little bit of my personal story, and I just wanted to struggle whether or not to share this or not, but we have a child. He's not a child anymore. He's a young adult that has cystic fibrosis. So if you're not familiar with what that genetic disease is, I encourage you to look it up. It makes him highly at risk. And I have concerns with bringing that back to him if we were to open up fully. He's a young adult and lives on his own, but my husband and I still see to his care. And if he's sick, we're the ones that help out. So I want you to remember that there are other teachers like that also, where we have family members that we're concerned about. So I'm comfortable if we're at that Level 2, and I have 50% of my kids. I'm a highly trained educator. I have a very specific skill set, but I'm not a babysitter. And while I sympathize with the childcare needs, I really do. I'm still a working parent as well. This should not be the deciding factor for opening schools. But perhaps it's time to look for some solutions through community partnerships. Let's reach out to our Boys and Girls Club, Care Lodi, the faith community. They could all help us come up with some childcare solutions should we not be able to open up fully. We need to dig deep and find solutions and not risk... Or not risk and not cave in to some of the louder minority that sometimes we hear that want a no-holds-bar, open it all up. And as a teacher, I know the importance of a child being in school. But let's not lose sight of what's more important, and that's the safety of the teachers and staff providing that education and the safety of the students as well. We cannot keep little people six feet apart. Opening fully cannot meet that requirement, and so that's a gamble. While I'm for providing an uninterrupted education for my students, I urge you to put teacher's safety and the safety of everyone at the school site at the forefront of reopening. Students won't be safe if teachers are not healthy. And COVID is a change in working conditions for your teachers. I urge you to please return to the bargaining table immediately to work out the reopening plan. That respects us as highly trained professionals, who are your biggest assets. You speak of a can-do attitude. Coming back to the bargaining table and working this out with your teachers will go a long way to prove that... To prove to the teachers that you support us and you value us. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Valerie, next?
Our last speaker is Jessica Kempker.
Jessica, you're running.
Thank you, President Nav, members of the board and Dr. Wasser. Anytime I'm unsure on what to do, I fall back on the numbers. So for a quick look back through time, March 6th was the last day that students and staff were on campus fully. It was the last day of the third quarter, and coincidentally, it was also the first confirmed case of COVID in San Joaquin County, March 6th. March 13th is when the first closure announcement was made. There were six cases in our county at that point. March 23rd, which should have been our first day back on campus, we weren't there, and there were only 52 cases in the county. April 2nd is when the full closure for the rest of the 1920 school year was announced, and there were 180 cases in the entire county across our whole population. As of today, we have 220 cases just among school-aged children, the children that we stayed out of school to protect along with our families. Across the entire county, today, we have 2,560 cases, including those 220 school-aged children. If we thought it was important enough to close when we had one case, six cases, 52 cases, and 180 cases, I'm concerned about the fact that we're looking at reopening when we have 2,560 cases. Doesn't make much sense to me. Please don't get me wrong. I have a nine-year-old child with ADHD, and I would love to see him go back to school and get some of his crazy out and get back to his friends and his normal life. But the reality is, if we can't keep him safe, if we can't keep our families safe once our kids leave school, is it worth it? My other concern with reopening on a full scale or on a 50-50 scale at this point is that it's been stated we won't have enough hand sanitizer. We won't have bleach wipes. And it looks like, from what Mr. Khan had said, we will have six of the sanitizing wands currently and 50 on order. That gives us 56. That's approximately one per site across the district. At a 50% enrollment or on-school rate at the high school, how is a custodian supposed to sanitize every room between passing periods with one sanitizing wand to keep it safe for our students moving from one class to another? It's not possible. And if we don't have bleach wipes, we can't ask the students to wipe down their own desks. If we're currently under a mask order and we go back under even 50% enrollment, how do I ask a five-year-old or a six-year-old or a seven-year-old to keep a mask on their face all day long? I would love to be back at... To see my son back at school, and I would love to be back at work in the district office full-time. But I'm not sure how we can do it safely at this point. My other concern is that we're currently 16 weeks out from our last day in campus and only five weeks away from what should be our first day. And the majority of what we heard tonight is we need to talk about it some more or we need some direction. We're five weeks away, 27 weekdays. That's it, 27 weekdays. And we don't have any answers. I'm very concerned about having enough time for staff, be that teachers, be that office staff, be that principals, and parents.
Keeps developing. We know that there was an agreement between the... Among the leaders that will move through the process. But I just want to point out something that we need to watch. There is a trailer bill associated with that budget, Assembly Bill 77, which would greatly reduce a school board's ability to be flexible and make these kinds of decisions. So please keep an eye on Assembly Bill 77 if you need to do some advocating. I would encourage folks to speak up on whatever position you wish to take. But it would move schools towards the direction of full reopening and only do other types of models under certain conditions. So we need to watch that.
Thank you, Dr. Wasser. All right, we'll continue on with the agenda. Our next subject on reports is Protected Insurance Plan for Schools' PIPs Renewal. Mr. Khan?
Thank you, President Nav, members of the board, Dr. Wasser. The staff has prepared the renewal payment to Protective Insurance Plan for Schools or PIPs. I know this has been an item of some concern at the board level. I've thought about this for a while, and I'd like to introduce this idea. We've been discussing, perhaps the way to frame it is which one is better, self-insurance or the one-stop shopping where we buy out the entire claim year's liability in one fell swoop? And the answer to which one is better, I think, is both are better. The thing that differentiates both of them is really the market we're in. We were very successful at self-insurance for quite some time. If we look at this item here from the 2003-4 claim year through 1415, the compounding rate of our liability was 2.2%... 2.24% on average over that entire span of time. And for most of that period of time, revenue was growing immensely as the LCFF gap filled and COLAs were paid every year. Something happened a few years ago, and those market conditions have reversed dramatically. Now our liabilities are compounding on average at eight... Over 8% a year. The last year jumped from 1.972 million in initial claims and then grew by roughly almost $900,000 the next year. So two things have changed markedly, and that's that investment returns on the money we hold in the self-insurance program have fallen dramatically. This is a graph of the five-year constant maturity yield U.S. Treasury. And we can see it's at historical lows. I use the five years as a proxy because that is the riskiest security that a school district can purchase under government code. But at the same time, the growth in cost of the liabilities that we're exposed to has been growing pretty much exponentially for some time now. So I think if I were to counsel anybody on how to think about this, it really is determined by the market you're in. And we did very well in the good years, but those have ended. And until these two items, investment returns and medical care inflation reverse and go the other way simultaneously, I'm afraid businesses' recommendation superintendent and indirectly to the board is always going to be hedge your risk by paying it out in the claim year itself and move on to the next year. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Mr. Khan?
Yes, sir.
How does volunteer aides and volunteer coaches and volunteer parents... Does any of this... How's this play into any of these situations as far as workers' comp and all that?
Well, I think if volunteers are a little sticky, I don't really know. I'd have to get back to you on the legal basis of whether or not they're eligible under workers' comp. I think generally, anybody that's working with us is probably one of our workers, but I'm not sure how the courts would test that. But I'll get back to you on that.
So it wouldn't matter which one of these systems? I mean, as long as they're part of us, they're...
The insurance is precisely the same. The one thing that would be different is who's doing the insurance, us, or whether or not we're paying to lay off all the risk to another firm.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Khan?
Yes, ma'am.
That's okay. Um, I, I agree with everything that you have written and said. Um, I guess my fundamentally or fundamentally my difference is it's how you would administer the claims and how the claims people handle your employees. And um, while I appreciate your, your information, I will probably still always go with the more human component, which would be self-insured. And that's just a fundamental difference between self-insured and a JPA. Um, but I do appreciate your information and it, and it is, it is appropriate and it is on point. I just fundamentally have a different viewpoint, but I do thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Navva.
I'm sorry. Any comments from the public, Valerie?
Uh, we have one comment from Deborah Ladwick.
Okay, Deborah, you're on.
Good evening, uh, President Navva, members of the board. I hope you can hear me. Um, could we actually look, could we actually look at the attachment that is the um, the agreement? Cause I, I have some questions in there, on there.
Mr. Khan?
Yeah, okay, there's somebody, it looks like they're bringing it up.
This item?
Yeah. Yep, this item, the actual, um, excuse me, the actual item that you have to sign. So um, I'm going to assume that this is the same as last year? With, as far as the, not the cost, but the notes and the disclosure statement and things like that?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay, so um, the first, the first thing is I didn't realize that what we actually are paying is just a percentage of, it's like we're making a deposit against our, the amount that we'll actually owe because it's based on our estimated payroll.
Correct.
So last year when we paid, now we've hit, we had COVID that hit in the fourth quarter of our school year. We didn't have any payroll for timesheets, for any extra work. We didn't have our extended year program the same as we've had in the past. For our nineteen-twenty payroll, if we're under our estimated payroll, will we get any kind of credit back for that?
Um, i-if we are, but I'm sure um it'll be adjusted, but these rates are based on our eighteen-nineteen um, X-mod years and payrolls. So that's where the estimates come from. So we'll see when we move into the final year of this program, um, what um, the um, the JPA actually assigns us as a payroll.
So each year our estimated payroll is the same as our eighteen-nineteen payroll, is what you're saying?
No, it's from the, i-it's successive. So um, you noted that nineteen-twenty is going to be skewed. And nineteen-twenty should feed the estimates for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Because the, the, the program would be uh priced on the nineteen-twenty X-mod or experience modification rates.
Okay, okay. So, okay, okay. That's the rate. But what I was talking about was the payroll. So the payroll is actually two years behind as well?
Well, I believe so because we haven't, by the time the policies are priced every year, we have not completed the payroll year.
Okay, okay. So then in the disclosure statement, I see down here, and I'm, it's very small right now on my phone, but I'm going to find it. It talks about the life of the claims being seven years. So my question is, we're going to pay this four million dollars for twenty-twenty-one payroll. What happens after seven years? Is everybody going to be taken care of in seven years? What if we still have claims that are outstanding in seven years? Whose responsibility is that?
That's the, the pool's responsibility.
Yeah, well, if it's a pool's responsibility, why does it say down here that what we're paying for is claims administration for seven years? Why doesn't it say for the closure of all the claims in this year?
I'm not sure, Deborah.
Okay, cause what, I, I just wondering, is this actually our cost or do we, are we going to have more cost after seven years?
Uh, right now, the, the actuarial at um, all of the members' contribution rates is ninety-nine-point-nine percent coverage. So um, I don't think anybody could um categorically say that um, there is no possibility of additional cost. The probability would be extremely low.
Okay. And do we, what is our plan to pay that? Do we have some kind of another reserve? Are we building another reserve to pay that?
No, no, the, the reserve in Fund Sixty-Seven is abundant.
For claims that are older than seven years? So if we do have to pay stuff later, we?
Just the reserve is abundant in Fund Sixty-Seven.
Okay, is that our insurance?
Cor-correct. So um, we were insured to seventy percent, seventy percent confidence um, in all of our insurance lines right now. That's OPEB, property and liability, dental, um, vision and workers' comp. Um, after all those reserves are set, we still have an extra fourteen million dollars left in that fund, uh, per second interim.
Okay, all right. So this, okay, so, so this is, this, what we pay is a deposit. It's a premium deposit. We get a settle-up sometime later. And it is possible that after seven years, there will be more costs on the claims generated in each of the years.
Well, I, I think the settle-up and the potential are the same thing. We, we aren't anticipating any settle-up in future years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Deborah. That concludes our comments on, on the insurance plan. Continue on with the agenda, routine agenda A. Any items pulled by the board? Seeing none, any items pulled by the audience?
Um, Item A two and Item A three.
Who's pulling them?
Um, Item A two is Michelle Oregon and Deborah Ladwick. Item A three is Michelle Oregon.
Mr. Navva, I'd like to pull A one.
Okay, got Mr. Porter, A one, Michelle and Deborah, A two, Michelle Oregon, A three. I have more of the minutes. Can I get a more?
Mr. President. I move that we uh pass Item A four.
A five.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven-zero. Okay, let's go with Mr. Porter, A one.
Yes, uh, I'd like to go look at the Windwalkers. Is that coming up at all or? Do I still have the screen? Yeah. Yes, do I still have the screen? Oh, no, okay.
There you are. There you go.
Uh, Mr. Khan, I believe that we have uh five-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand dollars with Windwalker.
Yes, sir.
Do we have an hourly contract with them?
They get an hourly rate, but we have um, um, an all-encompassing contract that includes that hourly rate.
Okay, so we, that, does that come up every year? Are we in a three-year contract or what is that?
It's a, it's annually.
And at the end of the year, is it possible for us to take that out to bid?
Yeah, um, we, I, I suppose we could, yes. This is a service and it's not required, but we can certainly look into that in the future.
Well, you're looking at six-hundred-thousand dollars. It's a pretty big item.
Understood.
I'm sure there's under, other businesses out there that provide the same services or not?
Um, there are. I, I don't know how close they are to low-die, but I'm sure there, there'd be several that would be interested in the contract.
Is there a possibility that CSEA would be interested in that?
Um, we would, if, right now, that, that would require actually negotiating a position to do this, I think, but it's possible.
All right, my last co-uh question then is, how many yearly contracts do we have and how many do you take out of bid every year? For example, our lawyers, do we open that up to bid every year and see what type of uh services they provide?
Uh, we do not. Those are again, services. They're not required to be bid under uh government code. Um, they're usually more of a, um, a relationship-driven item with special ed department personnel and of course.
They can charge us anything they want?
Well, I, I think they're pretty competitive. I, I know that um, I'll note that like the Lozano-Smith contract really altered the world of uh legal services by um cutting the bidding or the billing uh increments to ten minutes. Whereas, you know, a firm that would um have a thirty-minute billing increment, if you, if you uh work nine minutes with Lozano-Smith versus one that had thirty minutes, you get charged with thirty minutes for the other one. So there are a lot of good innovations in the contracts.
Would it be good business for us to open up uh those services and see what other people provide and at what cost?
Um, we could certainly take um, take uh proposals from any number of firms.
I think you do that on all, or, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We um, we, we currently contract with the largest educational law firms in, in the state right now. So we pretty much have all of them covered.
Well, large doesn't mean good. Um, is it possible for us then to open everything up yearly and just see who's out there that's interested in getting in our business? What type of services they provide in all uh our yearly contracts?
We could request proposals, yes, sir.
Now, you're a businessman. Don't you think that's good business?
Well, in, in service, generally speaking, yes, but in services, it is the quality of the service that uh is paramount.
Yeah, but isn't capitalism based on competition?
I, I believe it is, yes.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Porter. Uh, Item One A, please.
Uh, motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Porter moved that we approve, second. Second by Beverly, thank you. Uh, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries, seven-zero. Item A two, who wants to go first, Deborah or Michelle?
Deborah, go ahead, please.
Okay, now I'm here.
Okay.
I'm very sorry. Um, I obviously made a mistake when I was choosing. I actually meant to speak to A one instead of A two. So I will let Michelle go on A two. Thank you.
Michelle, you're on.
They, um, thank you. Um, and um, with, before I finish, I got my answer to the easement on A three. So there's no way for me to run to the podium and tell you never mind on A three. Um, with regards to A two, um, if we approve this resolution and there are other budget things that come down from the state that change, um, is there flexibility in coming back to talk about these reductions um at another time? Um, I know that the Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee is going to start to meet. And as the legislature has passed a budget, I believe the governor has signed it. Sounds like from what Dr. Washer said, maybe it hasn't been signed. Um, is there, can this come back to be altered at another time? Um, when we have a clearer picture of the new budget?
Mr. Navva?
Yes, Mr. Khan?
Um, so this is, um, using Michelle's words, this, this is a very, uh, yes, it is a very flexible document. Um, it won't need to be rescinded at any point in time. It is a companion piece to the board's budget this evening down below, which is um completely predicated on the May revision um dollar amounts. Um, so um, if the new budget is signed by, by governor, then there will be substantial changes to what we need to do in terms of budget reductions. And um, this item will, is flexible enough to allow um changes in what's listed in this document. But this document does need to be passed with the budget. Um, without it, the county technically could intervene in the board's um, uh, procedures and, and decisions simply due to the uh negative uh ending fund balance in the third out year.
Okay, so the, it's kind of a partner deal with the two, the resolution and the budget, but it can be changed. Um, thank you for that information. And again, um, I withdraw the poll on A three. Thank you, board.
Thank you, uh.
Mr. Navva?
Yes, Mr. Neely.
Move to approve Item A two?
Mr. Neely moves to approve A two.
Second.
Second, Mr. Porter, all in favor? Aye.
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 All in all, motion carries, seven-zero.
Mr. Navva?
A three, Mr. Neely.
Approve A three.
A three. Mr. Porter, second, the motion to approve A three. All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries, seven-zero. That concludes our routine agenda. We have other item actions, other action items. A Local Control Accountability Plan Operation Update, Mr. Sally. You're on.
Agenda item was a full report in June second by uh Dr. Seha. So this is just a second uh action, or second reading by the board with an action to meet the terms of the LCAP reporting requirements. Uh, as you recall, the LCAP was extended officially to be a December uh final report to the board rather than an annual June report. This summary is provided in lieu of a formal report, which normally attends the budget approval meeting at the end of June. So again, this was a, a formal report on June second, but if you have any other questions regarding it, I'll be happy to entertain them.
Thank you, Mr. Sally. Any questions by the board? No questions? Any questions by the public?
No questions.
Mr. Navva?
Mr. Neely.
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carolyn, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Carries the Local Control Accountability Plan Operations Update, seven-zero. Uh, Budget Adoption, Mr. Khan?
Thank you, President Navva, members of the board, Dr. Washer. Um, I, I can actually make this presentation if the board wishes, but as we've discussed um previously tonight, uh Governor and Legislature have announced an agreement on a budget that will look substantially different than this one. At this time, we, we firmly believe that we will be back into board in August with a forty-five-day revision under ED Code, which will restate the budget. Um, but I, at board's direction, I'd certainly be willing to present the material here. I'd just say it's um, not really what the board is gonna, not really the budget the board's going to be working with in the twenty-twenty-twenty-one year.
Uh, any questions from, comments from the board? I think this, this budget has to be passed and the budget, the budget's changed every day anyways.
That's correct, Mr. Navva. The board must pass a budget in time to deliver the approved budget to the County Office of ED by July one, or it could face severe funding interruptions in the next year. Um, my, my question was, does the board want me to? Um, my, my question was, does the board want me to go through these slides, or would the board prefer to wait until our forty-five day revision is available?
Mr. Nav, uh, I've, I've talked to, uh, Mr. Khan about this, this, this project really has nothing to do, there's no discussion necessary on this. We do have to pass it with that, I will move.
I need a motion.
I just, I just.
Okay, Mr. Neely had a motion to pass.
Second.
We do have one comment from the public?
Yes, sir.
We have one comment from Michelle Oregon.
Michelle Oregon, you're on.
I believe the question's been answered with, uh, uh, resolution, so thank you very much, uh, no questions at this time.
Thank you, thank you, Michelle. All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, motion carries, seven zero. Ratification of a Kennedy agreement with L U A unified super zari, which is my group, Mr. McCalligan.
This agreement's been ratified by L U S G, we just need board approval now.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Heberly. Second by Mr. Neely. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, no motion carries, ratification of a Kennedy agreement for L U A unified, so pass it, approve. You're on. Okay, seven zero. Other actions continued, approval of chief business officer contract for wind year extension? Yes, Mr. uh, Spadis, I'm sorry. Move to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carolyn. Uh, 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 I think, uh, Board vote, Mr. Neely?
Sir?
Big board vote, uh, Oregon?
Oh, uh, yeah, approve.
Okay, Mr. Heberly?
Yes.
Mr. Boarder?
Aye.
Mr. Spadis?
Aye.
Mr. Canaxa?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Warren?
Aye.
And Mr. Mahoney, motion carries, six one, approve. Approval of superintendent's contract for wind year extension?
Mr. Nav, move to approve.
Mr. Spadis, sir, move to approve, second.
I'm ready.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, seven zero. Personnel matters, approval of certification for personnel matters. Need a motion?
Move to approve.
Mr. Neely has moved to approve by second by?
Heberly.
Mr. Heberly, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero, communications. Comments from employee group representatives, uh, Ms. Valerie?
We have Michelle Oregon.
Michelle, you're on. Michelle?
Thank you, Valerie, thank you, President Nav, uh, members of the board, I know it is late. Um, thank you for, um, your time and attention tonight and, um, giving every, um, opportunity to all the speakers who had something weighing heavy on their mind and heavy on their heart with the opening uh, of school and how we, how we do that opening. Um, we're, we're all in here for the business, you as the board, for education, us as the teachers, our CSEA brothers and sisters, counselors, we're all in the business here for students. And, um, this is what we chose, and, um, right now is a challenging time that tugs on all our heartstrings, and we appreciate all the time that you've given this conversation tonight and look forward to more comments. The only thing that I would add, I did send a quick note, was I believe with, um, a couple of the teachers' comments that have to do with supplies and manipulatives. Some of the elementary task force, um, mentioned this morning, manipulatives for math. So as we look at those models, um, I think some of our administrators and teachers will need to work on placing orders as we know that those manipulatives and items, pencils, paper, erasers, crayons, especially for the littles, can't be shared, shouldn't be shared. And unfortunately, we know as we are teaching hygiene and, you know, how to conduct business in school, many times those crayons and erasers end up in little children's mouths, so we would respectfully ask that we look at, um, how we provide those supplies. It needs to maybe be a little bit different this year, and, um, I will refrain from any more comments on the reopening, um, for tomorrow night. Thank you for your time and attention, and, um, thank you for also appearing in front of us, um, this evening.
Thank, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, Dr. Washer, any other comments?
No further comments. Sorry, we also, we also have a public speaker. We also have a comment from Deborah Ladwick?
Yes, I'm sorry, Deborah, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Deborah.
That's all right, uh, President Wa- uh, President Nav, uh, members of the board and Superintendent Washer, sorry about that, it's getting late. Um, I, I wanted to thank, uh, Superintendent Washer for, um, acknowledging, um, our friend and brother, uh, Robert Seeler. Um, thank you for your kind words. Um, it is a big loss for our community as a whole, and I appreciate, um, your sentiment. Um, for, uh, the consent item, A one, the one that I wanted to speak to, but I put the wrong, marked the wrong number, um, I had the same kind of question as, uh, Mr. Porter regarding Windwalker. Um, Windwalker comes in when no one else is on campus. It's my understanding, they come in and they look out for, uh, vandalism or for, uh, fire, because we've turned off, um, the alert system, um, when we're doing some remodeling. And it, it just seems to me that that would be a perfect opportunity to offer, uh, temporary, some type of extra, uh, work to CSEA members who are already here, and I'm certain would be much less expensive than Windwalker and would actually have, um, skin in the game, you know? We actually care about our facilities because we actually want them to, um, be in good working order so that we can help, uh, provide for the students. So I think that we have, uh, uh, more stake in making sure that everything is done properly and, um, would welcome any opportunities to get any type of additional work that might be available, so if that would be possible, I think it would be great if we could offer that to our CSEA members. Um, uh, I also was very glad to hear about all the budget, that, um, everything is a mess. It's not a mess, but it's in flux, and we know that unfortunately, what we, what we've done tonight probably doesn't resemble anything that will eventually come out of our, uh, legislature and will have to come back and have a new, uh, revision in a couple of, um, uh, in a couple of weeks, so that'll be good, I'm excited about that. I'll, uh, it does bring up one question, though, wondering if the Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee will still be needed? Um, will we do, let's see, wondering if we will still meet as expected in a couple of weeks, or will we wait until the, uh, forty-five day revise to know exactly where we stand? To know what the work of the budget committee would be, uh, necessary?
Dr. Washer?
Mr. Nav, members of the board, we are planning on proceeding as scheduled. Uh, there are things that can certainly be discussed, uh, just generally speaking about budget ahead of time. Uh, we know things are in flux at the moment, but we intend to keep that process going.
Okay, excellent, excellent. Um, let's see, I think that's all I have for tonight, the public comment about the opening of school, especially from parents for whom it's gotta be very scary to speak in an open public mic like this. Um, I am just so pleased that people are taking such care to fully investigate what we can do to try to prevent illness as much as possible and serve our students in the best way possible. So thank you so much for all your time, and we'll look forward to seeing you tomorrow, or speaking with you tomorrow evening.
Thank you, Deborah, and good night to you. I have any, uh, board advisory committee reports? I have one request, uh, Dr. Washer, if at all possible, could you and, and, uh, your, your staff be on this board meeting tomorrow for a meeting in this board room?
Absolutely, we can.
Well, I would like to do that, I, I feel more comfortable, the board feels comfortable looking at you and looking at all the other people involved. If you can have, uh, uh, our assistant superintendents of secondary and elementary also on here, there's plenty of room with spacing, I think.
Will do.
All right, thank you very much, other than that, I have nothing else to do, may I entertain a motion for adjournment? Mr. Neely, move to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Mr. Porter, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, no motion carries, seven zero, meeting adjourned, we'll see you tomorrow, Gary, are you gonna be in with us?
Right, I will be there tomorrow, yes.
Awesome, awesome.
About eight o'clock, right?
Uh, wait, what's that?
About eight o'clock?
Eight thirty for you.
Okay.
We'll see you, guys.
All right.
All right, good night.